Thank you all. Uh, roll call. Uh, as the record show that, uh, Bob, Carol, Doug and myself are here live and online is, uh, Flavia and Doug, will you do your thing?
Yeah, I made the motion to allow, uh, Flavia to fully, fully participate in this meeting remotely due to, uh, exceptional circumstances.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, approval of final agenda, is there?
Carol wants to go home. My medicine works off its side.
We're moving out. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Um, here's just a quick question. I know that Flavia has kind of wrestled with the thing. It's really hard for her to talk. Is it acceptable, uh, so on the votes, if we can't mirror it, it's hard for her to talk?
She will have to articulate.
She will have to vote, okay. Alright.
Are you asking, did we just hear her?
Why, if she can text or respond?
The only alternative would be if she could text, but that would have to be saved in public records and, and where she's. All goes for her. We'll make sure that we do that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that's it. Okay. Uh, public comment, uh, Lawrence?
Take four right now.
Okay.
Uh, first up is Robert Raisler from Timber Ridge regarding Pond 94 and the water meter and connection fees. Just a reminder, you get three minutes.
My name is Robert Raisler. I'm in Timber Ridge here to talk about the, um, uh, the connection fees that we have, we have been informed to pay. We feel as though that's not fair. We feel as though the reason that those connection fees were not made in the first place was because of your contractor, WCI, who failed to put it together. We believe that that was done out of malicious, malicious intent and fraudulently to avoid paying the fees to Gateway Services. And that fee then was about sixteen thousand dollars. They were going through bankruptcy and did not pay it. So an opportunity to avoid the cost was pretty obvious because of the way that they had put them, the, uh, the meters in place in the one lot and in the park area of Ledgewood Circle. We thought we, we believe that because of the fact that the, uh, WCI was fraudulent, it costs the Gateway Services money. And it definitely can wind up costing Timber Ridge to wind up paying those fees, which should have been paid in the first place. So we're requesting the board to waive the fees, the, the connection fees. We'll pay for the meter. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Did you have, did you have a comment? You had another item, Pond 94?
We're gonna wait and see what happens with the, uh, with the waiver on the, or that.
Okay.
The surveying of that link.
Alright.
Well, I think that we should consider, well, there was one, uh, motion, or I want to give a motion to approve that, uh, survey.
We'll get to that.
And then, yeah, one, one needs to follow the, uh, would be, we need to, uh, do it. And then, we need the information. Okay, let's go on.
Alright, so the second comment is from Matthew Piller regarding Pond 94.
Good morning, board members. I'm Matthew Piller. I live in Timber Ridge, Ledgewood Circle. And my property is, uh, butts up to Pond 94. So, um, I'm just here to, uh, offer my two cents and encourage the board to approve, uh, the pond survey. I think that would be in the best interest of the, uh, development district and the board members and kind of assess when owners that have whose property that's impacted by it.
Are you on the east side or west side?
Uh, west.
It'd be on the west side.
West side.
Is that the corner, right by the bridge? Oh, okay. First lot, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Right up to that, uh, common area.
Yes, that's.
In the right one. Thank you.
So that's moving the comments. Thank you.
Alright, next up I have Tom Shaner regarding item 11C, the methodology.
Thank you. Do a quick, trying to make some notes during your discussion this morning. I know you'll have a real challenge and we do appreciate you leaders, but it is a challenge. Uh, I have a couple of questions I hope you will answer in the process. Um, I'm not sure we understand what benefits Pelican is getting now that it's never had before, but suddenly we're getting benefits. Landscaping, we think should be treated as its own category, should not be combined with roads. Perhaps use the EAU method to allocate. So, I know Russ is back here, he can hear me.
I got it.
Alright, parks and recs, again, it seems like a drastic shift. Um, why? I want to understand why, even though you came up with a political compromiseable point one five. We disagree with, there is no benefit to Pelican Preserve for the parks over here. Uh, roadways, they seem to be unnecessarily complicated in how you've done this. Uh, use the trip generator method or perhaps us taking ownership of the roads. Uh, administrative, Russ, I would hope you would dive into the underlying components of the administrative budget so that you have to evaluate, um, each component for the benefits that it, uh, derives to the community. And, uh, Mr. Banks, I'm not sure that, that one-third of the residents of Gateway, meaning Pelican Preserve, would go for the statement one gateway. It is not something we seek and do not want. Thank you.
Alright, and our final comment is from Carol Brockie regarding the same topic, 11C, the assessment methodology.
Carol Brockie for Pelican Preserve, uh, speaking for myself. I have attended all the workshops, um, on the, the different, uh, areas of, of silos. Uh, Russ's first explanation from, uh, from day one is that this is the methodology, silo, 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 silos. As, as we go through. So we, we've gone through the ponds. Pelican pays for its own ponds, Gateway pays for theirs. Split the flowway, no issue. Roads, uh, you pay for ours, we pay for yours, no issues. Parks and recs, um, you know, we still believe that we absolutely have no benefit. The 2020, uh, methodology shows that you need benefit for a, your home value. No Pelican Preserve resident gains home value from Gateway amenities. And then we talked about admin. Uh, I'm still confused as to what are the salaries, what goes here, what goes there? What I, I am concerned about is that the staff proposed that all get rid of the silos that we've spent all this time on, and then you put it in to everything into admin. I don't understand what the difference is between the silo costs, which I know when I sat there, the waterway was sixty cents in the silo. Now it's over two hundred. Can't figure that one out. Roads, on the silos, we were two hundred dollars to the, to the good. Now we're minus two hundred dollars. And it goes on and on. That needs to be explained and that alternative has to be with, with the silos, has to, has to be done. I don't understand our assessment, which is done by an expert. Takes a staff suggestion to put everything in admin when timelines have been always, have been done before. And it's arbitrary. It's absolutely arbitrary that, to make this change. And we need to depend on the, 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 uh, the benefits and the historical value that is significant, and that is the benefits.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, local achievements and, uh, recognitions? Nothing?
Nothing.
Uh, advisory committees, items and reports. Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee left in the fourth.
Perfect timing. They're literally just got online. He's calling you from Cabo on the Teams link, so.
They're calling you from where?
Mexico. I see you in Mexico.
You okay?
I hope so. I don't know why he want to come to the board meeting when he's in Mexico.
Dedicated.
I see you, Doug. Hopefully you can hear us. It's your turn. Uh, Pelican P-PAC is first. Oh, sorry, P-PAC.
Can he hear us?
And so the board requested that your, all of your advisory committees provide written reports to you, and so P-PAC has provided a summary to you and practice. So Doug's, Doug's not up yet, his items aren't coming.
I move that we accept, uh, the reports A and B.
All, sir. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post.
Aye.
Thank you.
I move to approve the amendments of October 21st and October 24th.
Subsek to that?
Subsek.
All in favor say aye.
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 Post. None? Five votes. Uh, consent agenda items. Uh, anybody want to call any of these? Or did this one?
Move to approve, agenda nine A.
Uh, motion made to approve the consent agenda nine A. This is the construction services agreement that was postponed at the last meeting from a two-two tie. Uh, I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Post?
No.
Three, two.
Alright.
Either or.
Either or.
Okay.
I'm beginning. Carol, you buy a plan here.
Three, two. District engineer, you know, who's online?
Uh, Stephen Agapi.
Hey Laura, Laura, can you just move the agenda online for me?
I'm getting feedback.
It's, uh, it's Flavia asking board to go to.
I'm sorry, Flavia, what'd you say?
I'm just, I'm just. For Laura. Thanks.
More time here.
She did, she wants, uh, board to go to the agenda on the display. She was.
Oh, did she? Okay. Uh, nine, ten, eight, uh, Stephen, you there? Stephen?
Stephen Agapi.
Good afternoon, this. Hey, sorry guys. I'm here.
I see you on.
Hang on, let me turn him off.
Hey, good afternoon. Stephen Agapi with Tetra Tech.
Thank you. Couldn't hear you.
No, that was me. That was my fault. Alright, go ahead.
Project update, Steve.
Alright, first up is the irrigation pump station, uh, generator. Uh, the contractor is to start work, uh, next month in February. Uh, so we're looking forward to getting that started. Irrigation enforcement improvements, uh, we're currently working with HMGP for, uh, grants uh, to, to find funding for this project. Uh, the Lower Hawthorne well, now that the site is dried out, uh, the contractors are on notice and they're working on their schedules to get out there and finish the piping and electrical work. Uh, the Gateway Utility Storage Building, uh, you may have noticed some work is going on next to the building that you're in right now. They started this week, um, to locate and abandon some of the older lines that were present. Um, they're gonna start hopefully next week with, uh, site work and grading. And that project will take approximately five months, uh, to complete. Chelsea, I don't know if you want to, I think Eric's on too. He might want to give an update for the, uh, Gateway Admin Building, or you might have a better idea of what's going on with that one and the master park plan.
We can let Eric, if he's on.
Eric, will you be on?
Yes, I'm here. Good afternoon. Um, for the Gateway Admin Building and, uh, park improvements, um, the notice to proceed, uh, to OAK is pending receipt of the building permit. We have worked with OAK to resolve, excuse me. There were two outstanding items that this week were resolved, so we should be resubmitting that building permit, uh, this week. Um, and then once that's issued, the NTP will be issued and construction will start. Um, I know, uh, Chelsea's been discussing a, um, a ribbon cutting ceremony possibly happening here in the near future before construction starts, so, uh, that's TBD, as far as the date, I believe. Submittals are starting to be reviewed, uh, uh, from OAK. Um, let's see. Uh, they submitted their schedule of values, which we, uh, need to review, um, and all of their front-end submittals. I think Randy's still waiting on some insurance information. I don't know if he's received that yet, but last I heard, uh, there are still some certificates outstanding. Uh, but in any case, we're, we're approaching a kickoff for construction. The pre-con meeting was already held. Um, and then my other project, um, I can talk about if there are any questions on the park and admin.
Eric, what is your best guess as to when that would start?
My best guess is a month from now.
Eric.
End of February. Right?
Groundbreaking?
Um, mid.
The end of February is the question?
Mid-February.
It's February, okay. You mentioned that two issues are resolved. Are those two issues anything that we need to know about?
No, it was.
They're resolved, Eric.
Yeah. It, it, it was just code, code questions about something that only the contractor could answer, so.
Okay, okay.
I had a conversation with OAK today and they've resolved it. They're waiting on conformed docs from Tetra Tech.
Okay, no.
Which they will have tomorrow.
Go on ahead, continue.
Um, uh, Chelsea just mentioned conformed documents. Those will be issued tomorrow. And that's just the, uh, all the bid documents combined with all the addendums in a one comprehensive set of documents.
You, you say, pre-construction meeting has already been held?
Yes.
Anything come out of that meeting significant?
Uh, I don't know if Chelsea has anything on that. Um, I know we'll be using Procore, uh, which is new to me, but, uh, to system for managing construction that, uh, some others were, um, familiar with and keeps all the submittals organized and the schedule in one place, so, um, that's a good thing. It, it seems like a good thing at least.
Up to a month ago, we, uh, were still waiting on a resolution of who's going to be our resident and project representatives. Do we have one now ready to go?
Tetra Tech and Bowman are everywhere.
Okay.
And then, but the contractors required to call in inspections with county and certain states.
Okay, but our resident inspector is, is online there?
Yes, you guys just approved it.
Okay. That was the Bowman deal was included with the, uh, Tetra Tech approval. Okay. Anything else?
Uh, no.
Alright, Stephen.
Eric. Eric, do you want to touch on your storage building while you're speaking?
Sure, if that's what the board would like me to do. Um, so on the public works building, uh, obviously the decision was made to, um, abandon efforts on the east end of the soccer complex. And we are proceeding with design modifications to, um, construct a, uh, parking lot. Basically an expansion of the existing parking lot to the east where the dog park is today. And then we are also proceeding with a conceptual site plan, uh, for the public works storage building and the new location that the board approved last meeting, uh, south of where you sit today.
Hey Eric, one, one question on that, Chelsea. Uh, I know in the past when we have, uh, discussed improvements to our existing property, we have brought up in the past, opening up, uh, an additional, uh, point of entry or exit.
To the west.
To the west. Um, basically when you come around the corner, it's, it's right in alignment with the, with the road.
I agree.
Is that something that we should look at as a part of this project? Because when I, when I'm looking at it, an additional point of entry or exit might be logical for, for you to come around the building. It could for, you know, for, uh, uh, for utility vehicles or just having another point of interest. I don't know.
Well, the big one is, is that the current gate directly went wrong, but it ain't on our property. Where the gate is, the current gate is not on our property. It's long stood the, uh, so having that, uh, ingress would be, uh, I think very advantageous.
This is what we've looked at in the past.
Yeah, I mean, it comes right off there. I agree.
Yeah, I mean, if it's just, if it's worth the past. So.
So, Tony doesn't count the, no, that's ten feet in the edge of the building.
I don't have any, I'm, I'm very insured.
Check that. What are you asking, Doug, that that be looked at?
Something somewhere around.
I think the district, um, maybe the district owned, they own soccer drive, nevermind.
Yeah, yeah, we could peel off right after we come in off soccer drive and turn to the right.
And go to the burb.
Yeah.
So, and what I'd like to do is just maybe just, uh, um, Eric, I showed, uh, Chelsea just the visual, what we're talking about. I know we've had these conversations before and we just never moved because we, we didn't proceed with any improvements.
Well, we weren't, we weren't put on where we're at now that we have to change.
So, I think it's just, I'm asking for nothing more than just maybe a, a, a viability look.
Yeah.
See if it adds value.
Well, we'll just, uh, just, I don't know if that will trigger any other improvements that would be required by the county. So we'll, we'll look at it as our.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, go ahead, Steve.
Alright, next up is, uh, Phase Two Year Two Lake Bank Restoration, which is Lake 127 and 130. Met Tower is already started on Lake 127. Um, they've got about half of the western side of 127, uh, with the fill placed. Um, they're progressing well. Then they'll move on to Lake 130, probably near the end of next month. Um, FY24 Lakes, um, MRI is scheduled to start next week on Lake 105. And then, that's a smaller lake, so they'll, they'll progress through the rest of the dry season into early summer with the, the remaining four lakes that they have.
Stephen, 105, that's the one with the huge rocks and Hampton Green, is that correct?
That is correct.
Are they going to remove those rocks or are they going to try to fill the voids with, uh, uh, some fine material?
Um, we're not removing the rocks. Those are part of the permit, so we're just going to be adding to that above them um, with a mixture of, of some rock and then some fill.
How are they going to get that, that sand? I mean, that is so porous, it's unbelievable. The last thing I want is to spend all that money and then have that thing starting to settle over the next two, three years. Somehow they're gonna have to get in there and put water in there and get that sand to go down and fill all the cracks and crannies to make sure that we don't have any voids, because there are some huge voids.
Agreed, yeah. We're using a filter fabric between, um, the placement of the fill and the existing large rip rap.
I just want to make sure that you, you can compact the daylights out of that, uh, material from the top, but getting it to go down to two, three, four feet down to the bottom of, between those rocks. Those rocks have been there for a long, long time and there's some big, big washouts. I just want to make sure that that material we bring in gets down in there and then we don't get this thing built and then all of a sudden start having it settle all over the place.
Understood.
Go ahead.
Um, FY25, um, we did receive bids yesterday for the rebids of those. We're currently, uh, reviewing those. And at the next board meeting, we'll bring bid recommendations to you.
This is on the bids that were received yesterday?
That is correct. Um, FY25 Lake Bank Construction Management, uh, this is Lake, uh, 98 and 99. Those are scheduled to start, um, I don't think on the 20th. I think on the 27th is the actual date they're gonna start on. It slid since last time, so that'll start this month also, and that's with C and B Civil. Um, the FQA project is going well. Um, most of the pipe work is done. They've got the above-ground piping complete. They're wrapping up electrical. And they need to, so they need to complete electrical work and, uh, skater and restoration, and they should be done in February for that project.
Okay.
CCTV sewer, um, that project, we have the bid documents, uh, pretty much complete. We're just working on the ITB, uh, documents right now with Randy. And the CCTV storm project, we have the draft bid docs. Um, they were due on the 10th, but we're wrapping up a figure that we're just, we're just taking a second look at before we send that out. So that should go out sometime next week, um, for that first draft. The engineers report for assessment methodology you guys spoke on today. Um, I didn't hear yet if there are any comments for us, but if there were, we'll incorporate those into our report for the hearing. Uh, Pelican Lakes 47, 48 are on the agenda for rec, you know, board approval. Um, if those get approved, we'll have inspection services for those. Uh, development updates, Arborwood Phase Three.
Stephen on 47, 48, I think that probably is more for you than waiting till that, uh, comes up on the agenda. I noticed in reviewing it, why would we have two bids from two contractors and have different quantities? How does that happen? One was bidding on fifteen hundred, I'm just, uh, pulling out a number, fifteen hundred ninety-six lineal feet. And the other one was bidding on fourteen hundred and forty lineal feet. If real pond 47 and 48, I would hope that the distances would be the same.
I can answer that, Steve. Uh, this is Doug. I, I can answer that, uh, Ed, if you want.
Sure, I'm just trying to figure out typically when we did a job on the same job, the two contractors had the same quantity.
They, the, the, the difference is in one case, they restored the entire pond, even when there was zero erosion. And the other case where there was zero erosion, they did not do, uh, they did not restore the zero erosion part of the bank. That's the difference. We had the same thing on Pond 36. When we did Pond 36, a part of the bank was not restored.
So Doug, that was at the bidder's discretion to include additional snow? Okay.
Thank you. Steve?
And that's why it was normalized to the price per linear foot versus the total price. So it was apples to apples.
Okay, that makes sense now. Okay, Steve?
Um, development updates, Arborwood Phase Three, still waiting for Lennar to finish punch list items and, and that project. Uh, Daniel's Parkway Apartments, we are still waiting for updated plans from the developer. Uh, Santa Luz, we've been working with them to get them to make the repairs. They're scheduled next week to video inspect the downspout drains that are supposed to go out to the lake. And once we have confirmation of those, um, or once we verify what's there, we can make a recommendation for repair. And if there's nothing needed to be done with those, they can move forward with the Lake Bank Restoration.
Okay, so I can tell, I just had a person finally before the meeting started asking, this thing, this, you talk about cans getting kicked down the road. This is the longest deal I've ever seen in my life. So we, I can tell them that work is going to be starting soon?
Yes, sir. Yep. Next week, they're gonna be video inspecting the downspouts, because we had questions about where they actually were, because you can't see them. So they're gonna prove where they are, if they are where they say they are. And then they'll be able to repair the pipes and then the lake bank after that.
Okay, thank you.
Garrett FM, we have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow morning, um, with the developer, the EOR and Lee County. So the next meeting that we have, I'll be able to give you more of an update on when they plan to start.
Thank you, Stephen.
And that's, that's demo, right? First phase is?
Yes.
First phase will be demo, yep.
First phase is demo.
Yes. Uh, okay, anything else, Steve?
Um, I've got another item on the agenda right after this. We can roll into.
Ready? Okay, let's go to, uh, ten, ten B, which is the surveying proposal of, uh, the site surveying of Pond 94 on the east bank, west bank?
Yep, so this is pretty much the same request that we had for Lake 109, where the surveyor went out and put stakes at the property corners. Um, we were asked to provide a, a cost to, uh, to do the same thing for Pond 94, or Lake 94 rather.
The motion to move and authorize this work? I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor say aye.
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 Post?
No.
When in the?
So, my question is, when, what are they staking exactly? Is it from?
The control elevation.
Water mark?
No.
Off twenty feet?
Control elevation. That's what establishes the elevation. Right now, you can't tell what's over there because of the water level and, uh, the, the extent of erosion. I mean, it's, I think I know what I'm doing over there and I don't even know what I'm looking at over there. It is so confused. So what we need is a property description of the corners of those fourteen, about sixty?
Yes, fourteen, fourteen lots, that's correct.
So that we know definitively where does the twenty feet LME start and what's the extent of the erosion? Because some of those lots, it's immensely significant. Other ones, it may not be. But right now, we don't have anything to go by. Nothing.
So you'd say?
Which is what we've done in other ponds where we have this issue.
So there's a possibility that the property line could be in the lake, is that what you're saying?
I think the property line's way in the lake. Yeah.
Okay.
I think this is the one of the worst. I think this is probably the worst ones I have seen.
How have we handled this in the past? We, we restore all the way out to the property line?
But I think though this one here, we better look at first what we've got. I would, I wouldn't even want to guess on some of those lots, how, how to do the project.
Okay, so that's where I'm getting at.
Yeah.
But if we take the historic perspective and we take the grass line right now as the beginning point, regardless of where the problem is. And coming in ten feet or whatever, then we just restore or?
Well, it, it gets down to an issue that, uh, that I think this is a maintenance issue, that it's, or lack thereof. Well, it's, it's gets down to an issue that uh that I think this is a maintenance issue, that it's or lack thereof over the years. And it's pure erosion and it needs to be addressed.
So I'm just asking you what?
Which means they're going to have to bring in sweat.
It's a restored property.
Yeah. But right now.
Different price tag that, are there, are there littoral's on this pond?
Uh, I don't, very few. There are, I don't see any.
It's not surprising there's a reason.
So just out of curiosity, and we may have addressed to the past, and this might be my lack of knowledge. So when we go and survey upon before we do work, how is that handled and why we've had recently a couple instances of where we need to go back and re-stay?
I think it started, I think it started, probably didn't your pond, wasn't that one of the first ones that where we did that?
Well, I think, Stephen, what's the protocol? What's the protocol? When we go and we uh survey or or whatever the typical term is, these ponds, are we just assuming control elevation or are we looking at uh property lines or like? How do we determine this so in the future? We do it at the point of the start of the project, not post?
So up to today, what we have done is we have restored the lake bank to meet the slope requirement. We haven't really had a lot of situations where the property has eroded so much so that when the slope is regraded, the property line and the control elevation are going to be very far off. Most of the time, when you add in your fill to get your four to one or six to one, you're adding fill away from the property into the lake. So you are adding some dry ground for them and it gets pretty close to where it is supposed to be on the plat. Um, we haven't really had a situation, I think this one is probably the worst case scenarios. And when we do our survey, the surveyor will go out and they'll try to locate um corners, benchmarks, anything from the plat that is identifiable so that we can, you know, map out the platted properties and on this.
We typically do due diligence and you're looking for?
Yeah.
From markers or or based on the?
I, I.
And we did do that for this lake. We did find several property corners that were about five feet away from the current, the the current uh grass line. And it does appear that there has been a good amount of erosion on the west side of this lake. It does not seem like it's an issue on the east side.
I think it's an issue on at least two lots on the east side. At least two lots, but anyway, the issue is, is that I don't know how you can do do good engineering unless you know what you're working with. And one of our key things that we have established is the work starts at the LME. We need to know where the LME is. If the LME is ten feet in the lake, it's ten feet in the lake. If it's up on the ground, it's up on the ground. But right now, you go over there, I dare you to show where it is, it is that, is and to see that, you can't tell.
Unfortunately, yeah, the way we've approached ponds up to here, I'll speak to Pelican, not necessarily the Gagway. But we've never really paid a lot of attention to this. In the past, we were just, we just, as uh Stephen said, we're just restoring the slope. Uh, and certainly if we determine that this is the better way, and I'm not saying it's not the better way, but that we're significantly increasing the cost of what we're going to do.
Where it comes into play on what you've got coming up later upon forty seven, forty eight, at least based upon my walking around it and looking at the documents, is that it's very critical because you're going to have one heck of a lot of people's going to get their blocks clear cutting.
Well, that that was, no, that's a whole other issue.
I mean, I'm not getting into that.
You guys don't have that.
No.
You don't have that issue.
And we have, we we have some trees.
But the issue is to?
We have, we have planting something in the quote unquote twenty foot. It has no impact on the provider's ability to go and do the jobs. They could do the job, so we could go into things.
Pond forty seven, my survey.
Excuse me, Joe, excuse me, Joe. But the other part of it is, as we're talking about now, if we're going to go out and consciously restore, and I'm not going to pass a judgment on that, good or bad, but believe me, we are now adding a whole different.
Look, 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 look at your ponds over there, you don't have the erosion that I, I don't think you have a pond in all of Pelican that has the severity of erosion that we have at ninety four and one oh nine.
Well, we may not, but we did it one time. Uh, the Avila Lake was a five foot drop, I mean, it was tremendous, but if somebody stepped off that, you couldn't get out.
Yeah.
But even when we restored that, we didn't go back to what the original property line was, we just.
Yes, I, my whole point is, you know, is this something we need to pay a little more attention to at the the very point, the very beginning of uh, you know?
My opinion is, is that when we start these projects, we need to go and look at these right off the bat and either eliminate or create the need to add those surveys to, if we, if if it's problematic. We might be though, some of these ponds, we can, instead of like over at Bob's place, instead of fourteen, we we cut it down to four, five, six.
Yeah.
But his is so bad, I think it's all fourteen.
Well, there were some properties out on uh in Carina. We consciously allowed WCI to not fill in ten feet of earth for a property.
Well, and and.
I mean, there's been exceptions to this rule all along.
And and Bob, I think you've even brought this up in in the past, where we, where we have lakes that do have severe erosion. Uh, we do need to make sure that we're identifying the the root cause of that, um, so we can have preventative maintenance or else hot teenage on the road, we're basically, you know, doing the same thing, we're not, we're not addressing those. Some things we can solve, some things maybe might be more difficult.
And to this end, because we've only been discussing this probably really earnestly in the last four months or so. But we are now plating every property on a pond in Pelican to the GIS to see where the property lines are, that's now being done so that we can look at it going forward.
Well, that's important too, in 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 our ongoing effort to create GIS growth, you know, we need to have proper lines.
We need to have proper line.
You know, and I went to, again, went over there forty seven, forty eight, uh, not to get off of tangent here, but your LEPA drawings and dimensions are much more, appear to be much more accurate over at Pelican than they are over on Pond ninety four, much more.
Well, we're all new.
Yeah, so anyway, we've got a motion, I think we always. So Stephen's got the uh authorization to do the uh surveying of uh Pond ninety four. And until we get that information, I, I don't think we do anything uh at ninety four. Bidding it could drastically change, in my opinion. But I think that comes up later. Uh, anything else, Steve?
That's all for me, thank you.
Lord, Lord, have any questions for Steve?
No.
Eric, either one?
No, thank you.
Tony, you look like you want to.
What was taken?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, sure, okay.
I think it was four to one.
Okay.
Okay, uh, admin items, uh, A quarterly financial update.
With Stephen Blum on the line and give you quarterly financial update.
Steve?
Uh, good afternoon, um, and by the way, happy new year. Um, what you have in front of you is is the financial overview uh for the first quarter of your fiscal year. Um, as as we've talked about in the past, usually what we see from a revenue perspective is the same thing we're seeing here, which is the assessments coming in, um, you know, quite a bit in that first quarter. Um, really the, you know, a couple of things to call out in terms of revenue. First is eighty eight percent, you know, of your totals, you know, annual assessments across the board have already been received uh by here by the end of December, um, you know, really good number. And again, we've always had a very strong um collection rate. Um, in terms of utility billings, about twenty two percent um of the budget, um, you know, for for the billing. And then the last piece that I, you know, we've been talking about before is interest income. Uh, so for the first quarter, um, about two hundred and seventy seven thousand um in interest income across all the funds. Now, the bottom left of this report shows that uh number broken down uh by the different funds. Um, so for example, the general fund is about sixty thousand, again, this is just one quarter. And Pelican Preserve about thirty five thousand, you can see so forth and so on. But again, it, you know, we'll continue to talk about this because it's obviously such an important part, um, but again, it is good to see those numbers are still strong, even with some of the, you know, the Fed fund rate um dropping a little bit. Um, next part of here in terms of spending?
Steven, excuse me, uh, the the sheet we're looking at right now would be thirty five thousand. This is net what it took to pay off the two thousand thirteen bond? This says December thirty first, and I think it was paid off in November, so I just wanted to.
Which piece are you talking about in terms of net?
Well, and the.
Because the debt service, and I was, if you, it's actually a good timing, when you look at the debt service expense, that's where you're going to see, um, you got a big number there because that's where you will see that payoff. So yes, it includes it in there.
Okay, all right, thank you. So we save three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars in interest by paying?
No, no, that's not interest, that's just the, that's just the payment of the bond, the interest is, you know, what was earned on um investments.
The interest wasn't right work, that was the bond expense we've avoided by paying it all.
Oh, no, no, that's that, we, I'd have to calculate that separately, that's completely different, Bob, I'd, you know, I'm happy to do that and go back in and take.
No, no, I, I don't care.
Yeah, no, no, I, let me, let me again, you know, be clear. When I'm talking about interest in this top half of this report, this is additional money coming in um based on, you know, your different money markets and trust accounts.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, and again, it's not found money, but it is an opportunity to bring additional money that we don't necessarily budget for because we can't be certain of it, but yet we'll we'll be able to use for those different funds for different things, you know, like if you'll, you know, if we need a, something for a quick project or something. So that's why it's important to kind of keep, you know, showing that as well as to keep utilizing the district's funds to keep investing in and earning, so that that's what I'm referring to when I talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
And this, this is as a part of the new fiscal year, right, the clock starts over?
Twenty, on twenty six.
Yes, this is all, yes, this is all new to your, yeah, October through December. Uh, middle section there is is on your your spending again, it is, you know, the early part of the year, obviously projects will start to pick up. Uh, you know, really, there's not a whole lot to call out in terms of spending other than what I just mentioned, which is that the, you know, the the bond was paid off, um, and that's why you're seeing there on the um debt service row, you're basically a hundred and twenty percent of your entire budget and that's, you know, because of that that particular payment. Otherwise, it is kind of what we would expect, it's it's it's, you know, um, nothing above budget, a little bit below and, but again, it it will pick up um as you go on uh through the year, especially with your projects. Uh, the last piece, and this is kind of, it is the year carryover from twenty twenty four. We've talked about this in the past and one of the things we decided we would do is keep making sure we would show this number and update it as time went on, even though the final number, the final carryover, which we won't know until the audit is presented in March. But as a reminder, this is the the amount of money from twenty twenty four that is available to carry over for different things and it's just a, it is what it says, it's a carryover. So for example, the general fund, the end of the day, when we look at our twenty twenty four financials preliminary, it's about one point uh four million dollars, a Pelican Preserve right now is about roughly a hundred and ninety one thousand. Um, now, these numbers again are going to change, but you know, we've talked about as we enter the budget process as you're making decisions on different projects, having this handy and and updating it each quarter um is valuable information. And and this is kind of where we are right now.
I mean, this is an area, Stephen, that um we've talked about in the past that I I'd love to see a little more rigor on and maybe Laura, you can help us, help us with this. You know, it really doesn't really doesn't matter where we come in Pelican until we're mid-year. Because at mid-year, you have a good idea of what projects you're going to execute for the remainder of the year. Um, and I know we historically always have carryover, which in most cases may not be a bad thing, but for me, from my upbringing, there is a plus or minus variance that is negative on on either end. I would much rather get in mid-year, identify what projects have high likelihood that they will not be completed or started in that fiscal year, so we can identify available budget to reprioritize items.
But that's the current budget year, right?
The current, but, but, yeah.
This is the twenty four.
Yeah, no, no.
This is what we, yeah, this is what I'm saying, like, yeah, but now.
You know, we're the, we're in Q one of that, so normally the end of Q two, beginning of Q three, we would have an exercise, hey, we are, you know, fifty percent, fifty percent of our budget. Laura and Chelsea would say, we are, um, out of all of our projects, we have an eighty percent, you know, confidence that we will complete all of these. We've got four projects that potentially are risk for weather or, you know, whatever reason. And then we can start to have conversations on, okay, this project, we're going to go ahead and push to next year's fiscal budget, we're going to pull something back in, because I would much rather be operating to a plus or minus five or ten percent uh and and have less money carried over. Um, that's just my personal, um, you know, philosophy. And it's been to our advantage to have carryover, but we've had a couple hundred thousand, which is, which is great, but at the same time, we could have probably gotten some other stuff done in that fiscal year.
Or reduce costs.
Or reduce costs.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I don't like adopting attitude that.
Yeah, and I appreciate you saying that.
That's what we don't.
Which might actually be the thing that we say, hey, we, you know, we were able to, you know, not execute a certain percentage of our budget because of, maybe we got.
Got a better deal on something. We want to encourage that type of fiscal.
But I don't wait till the end of?
The year, right?
End of the year and say, oh, by the way, we have all this money because we did do these, these. We normally know, I mean, because you guys normally do a pretty good job of what's going.
Help us when we're going to look at the budget stuff, if we kind of look and say, okay, we know we have this three hundred thousand dollars allocated for this project, we know we're not going to finish it this fiscal year, so we're going to have to move into next fiscal year. So then that's, I can put it in with a caveat that we're going to use funds from the previous year, so that way we're not assessing that three hundred thousand dollars, knowing that we're not going to finish the project.
And we did, I mean, it was valuable on this budget season because we did have projects or things that we had allocated that didn't come to fruition. And we could pull forward for like parks or different things, okay, it worked for our advantage this year. But I I think there should be a s- uh, a formal, um, you know, maybe it's a workshop or maybe you just do, hey, just as in FY, this is where we're at.
Sure.
So we've learned that this is not fixed, it's very, very.
One nice thing with the fact that we now have our procurement in the accounting software, where when Infomark was doing the books, we had our procurement and they had the accounting stuff. So it's all in one place, so I can look and see, okay, yeah, we have this project out there, we have X dollars that we've spent so far, this is how much the budget is. I have these X dollars already allocated towards it, knowing that we have this coming up, it's like, what is it going to hit this year?
We do that at Toronto, I'm believing, yeah.
Sure, yeah.
I think when the financials are released, that's something, I look through them as soon as Sonya sends them. Uh, and I have weekly meetings with all the department heads, so uh to Bob's point, you know, we're not spending money just to spend money, you know, we're being smart with the dollar.
Well, the other part that we gained a lot from recently is now when Laura uh identifies something that's encumbered. Okay, it was in the budget, we have to spend it, but it's encumbered, to me, that's spent, it's.
Right.
And we don't see that.
And as you're aware, this ability to, you know, both ends of uh of finances, you can say at the end of the year, you had a six percent uh cost save in these areas for projects because we got a, you know, we're able to negotiate, negotiate a great deal on materials for.
New technology engineering, that's really what the board wants to hear. This is alternative.
Yeah, and and, you know, it's good for us to to have more confidence that you guys are managing on the back end and good project management and fiscal responsibility. But it's also a good story to tell to the residents too.
Stephen, anything else?
Uh, nope, that's all I have.
It's got to go.
Didn't see, didn't, they're gone with that.
Colonel's poking me in the ribs over here.
All right, thanks, Stephen.
Thanks, Steve, thanks.
All right, we have Pat Hayes here to give you a brief update on the fire impact credits for Pelican Preserve, which, there he is. He's made of the hour, sounds good.
Well, it's, hasn't been terrific ourselves, uh, we we haven't made any, that's the.
Oh, sorry, can you just state your name quickly?
It's Pat Hayes, excuse me. The amounts, I I think have come into play, Lee Health has just built facility, this is just an example. Um, you know, seventy million dollar facility and a fifty million dollar um generator plant. And out of that, the total amount of uh fire credits was around forty thousand, out of which with a fifty percent discount, would have saved him twenty thousand. Now, I thought actually they were going to do the deal, looked like they were going to do the deal. Well, when they got their permit issued that same day, they ran down there and pulled their permit and didn't call me or we didn't do anything. And I'd already sent them the uh, the uh W nine for gateway and sent them the, how to make the checkout and done the whole thing. And I got a email back and said, hey, you know, every day we're late, I couldn't get this through my committee and every day we're late was sixty thousand, we were losing. So, you know, it's it's been, it's, that's been the uh problem, has been the amounts now. Um, the good news, I guess if there is good news, we've got a a shot at some units coming up, some multifamily. And that's really where you're, we're going to have uh any kind of chance to do anything. That's two hundred and fifty seven dollars a door roughly for uh multifamily fire impact fee assessment. And I've got a four hundred and seventy two unit project right now that's been in for permitting. That's probably not going to get permitted by April first. But the county, now the city still has to concur with us, but I think they will because it's an interlocal agreement. County usually decides what's going on, Lee County. Uh, the, the permits, we can apply these credits, they can. Permits, we can apply these credits. They can use the credits and pay for them. As long as they're used before April first. So what that would mean is I could go back to some of these accounts that because it's been taken six, nine months a year. For permitting, like the Amazon facility, that's a long way. We won't even see that, but as soon as they make a calculation. On what the impact fees are for the project. Then I can take what we've got there and transfer the re- to credits to that permit. They can use the credits right there, and the only risk they run is if they don't pull the permit. Or if they change it dramatically where they have to issue another permit, then they lose, they they, the credits. Will have expired at that time. So they have to pull the permit that the credits are used for. Now, the only, you know, there's other problems with the four hundred and seventy two units. It's that Stafford place. Is what I'm going to call the project. There's twenty eight different permits. Um, there's apartment buildings and there's parking garages and everything else. So some of them are ready probably today. To 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 do. And so if I can convince them at least to do the ones that are ready today, which I, you know, may be able to, if I can get. I've got to get the city to agree, uh, Glenda Spuck, I think she will. Then at that point, if they've got five of those twenty eight ready and they know they're going to. Stick to their guns, pull the permits and do exactly what's on paper. Um, I think I'll be able to transfer some credits on that project. Another one, a couple of them in in Fort Myers, one of them in the enterprise zone, I found out two weeks ago that isn't. Assess any impact fees. And the other, um, I think we've got a good chance at because last time I talked to the developer on that. Um, we were speculating pretty much from the feedback we got from the city, they weren't going to allow us to. Use the credits prior to the permit being ready to issue. So that that's the big thing right now that's going to maybe give us a few of it. If I was looking at a number right now, the probably the best case scenario, the best case if everybody pulled permits. Uh, paid their and 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 bought credits from us that I've dealt with probably a hundred and. Fifty to seventy thousand dollars in in uh, credits and fifty percent of that rolling in. Uh, which isn't, you know, anything grand, but at least it's sunk.
About seven hundred thousand is just going to expire?
The rest of it's just going to expire. Um, I mean, I've actually gone in. Uh, we I've talked, had a meeting with county attorney and with Audra and everybody else out there and they're. You know, they they basically, their position's been these things were extended and extended and extended, and they're not going to go any further on an extension. So, I mean, I think these things originated from like Westinghouse, you know, it's been that long. Um, and I know when I sold the road credit, road credits here back in the nineties and it was all. You know, they were there, but they weren't selling them then. Fire, fire was. Twenty dollars a house or something. So, yes, there is there anything I can do? I mean, if there anything there is, I will. Um.
Come closer to April and maybe we'll let you back and see if we can get any movement.
Well, just don't take me out and hang me on a tree, okay, when I come back, but I'm I'll. I'm doing, I I'm I'm working on it. It's not like I'm not working on it and and uh, if. I I even, you know, Chuck Mayhew, I don't know if any of you know Chuck, he's in the real estate business. He's got the parcel down on uh, uh, Shoemaker. And Colonial and there, he's got about a million five of road credits. And. Chuck had told me at one time to sell the road credits, and I'd sold a lot of stuff for Chuck, and so I got the credits all ready to sell. And I was packaging them up with one of our uh, uh, some fire credits for the the people that were doing the. Uh, project, you know, uh, on MLK. And uh, Chuck pulled them at the last minute, and I think the reason why I found he's got Costco and a couple other. Projects going in on the parcels he represents on on there, and he's going to save them for for that. So that that kind of was a setback um, with with that too, from from our standpoint of what.
Appreciate the update.
Alright. Thank you all.
Thank you. Item eleven C, assessment methodology. Russ, back up. Now, we can make the motions.
Um, yes, for the rapid rust wire, real estate econometrics, uh, it's twofold. Number one is. My direction is to prepare the report based on the benefit assessments as presented, which we've done, we've gone through. And then I will prepare an addendum memo that will cover the following items. Breakout landscaping, which is one thing we talked about, uh, put the salaries and wages back into Pelican Preserve, which we talked about. In the silence, correct. Um, admin, uh, show the costs and what is put into what silos. They were, um. That was that was asked actually earlier. I mean, so you all know, when I go through, you'll see an assessment or you'll see uh, administration budget. I'll show which line items go into roads or go into. Um, going to, yeah, like roads and the Pelican Reserve Security, all those kind of things. So you'll know what line items are going into those.
You can have all that by the February fifth meeting?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I only have three weeks and that's.
Two, so give me a a week at a time.
Oh, that's right. I only have two weeks.
For clarification, it'll just be a PowerPoint would be the report.
Draft report.
Be the draft report. That's what the board needs to see is the report.
Yeah.
And part even a PowerPoint for the draft report. Okay, is there a motion to?
Well, wait a minute, I saw it. I didn't go through all the items on the addendum. Uh, fourth, determine the landscaping outside of the gate at Pelican Preserve and split between Gateway and Pelican Reserve, like we had talked about.
Yep.
And the fifth one is C five and commercial to the Pelican Preserve roads, just to take a look at.
Correct.
So, yeah, those were the five things. Was there anything else?
No, man, I think ultimately. What I'm hearing from the volunteer is they want to go and see a summary comparison between the current methodology and the proposed methodology.
Yeah. And and.
So that we can make an intelligent choice?
I'd like to make a comment real quick. So what we've been discussing internally. You know, working with Russ on this is specifically for the for the staffing, right? So you're trying to do old tomato, but you can't because the old is fifty nine, fourteen, twenty seven.
Yeah.
Well, I, that's what we have to gauge, and so I just, I want to, I want to be clear that it's not.
But in order to be fair. When you want, uh, I think Pelican is the one that wants to see an apples to apples comparison. However. If you can't do that, this is methodology calculations or the environment changes, you just need to call out. There is no apples to apples comparison. Here's the, here's the amount, here's the amount. Like, this is not, like, there's a variance here, and I think that's really important.
Yeah.
Because the argument is, well, it's it's the same as if the calculations are the same that we've always done, why don't we just do it the way we always do it? But the calculations aren't the same. The numbers may in some instances be uh, directionally. You know, all the same ones, but the calculations vary in that.
We have one methodology that we're going to look at, and I'm just looking for it.
But but what Russ is saying is to. Yeah, but you can call out, this is not a, this is not apples.
Well, yeah, well, the other one, this major change is that the uh, methodology on roads. Did not use that uh, current deal five years ago. That is a huge difference.
Oh, it is.
It makes it, it make it, it's not apples and apples.
Well, we're showing it. I'm showing it now as you saw in in the the uh, before and after on the on the assessments, but at the same time. Let's see if I shouldn't have any or the commercial which didn't have any, so.
If you go back and did what you did then now, that their share is going to be dramatically higher.
Right.
Because of the fact of the differential on the uh, generation just alone.
Right, okay. Anyway, I understand what you're what you're looking.
So that's that, that covers everybody's.
Yep.
Requests. Is there's the others since motion then Tony, do we need a motion to uh, authorize Russ then to proceed on that basis to?
We just gave him direction.
Is it, do we need direction or? I think it's all a motion to or to be inconcurrent, I still move. Okay. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So there will be no additional requests between now and then two weeks from now from any board members to Russ.
I I almost say that's part of.
That is.
Part of the agreement is what we're asking Russ.
But having, but having said that, and I agree, I hope it'll make, but if you issue a new report tomorrow. Okay, I've got three different pages in in three days. It's a moving target.
Well, and and but but those were triggered from conversations had by individual board members with Russ. And so that's why I want to be clear that when this report comes out, there's not additional questions happening in the background.
Before the.
Before the board meeting. That way we get everybody's one report.
Yeah, report and an addendum that shows the addition.
I won't have a comment till I see something. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody? Bobby, say aye.
I say aye to agree.
Thank you.
Can I go now?
You you can go down.
Well, could I just ask one more question?
Already voted aye.
I did. I did. You know, um. Like in accounting, when you start, you have to choose if you're going to do the cash method or if you're going to do the accrual method. Is there such a thing in the world of methodologies such as that? Is there another alternative? Is there a?
No, Carol, it's it's rarely, it's it's very simple. It's the budget, and then we determine which line items go into the silos, and then we use the benefit calculation that we've all determined. That we're going to use on those lineups. So the the only opportunity to see if there's any change would be is. Do we agree on this budget line item or this budget line item? And they're pretty straightforward when I go through. So that's that's true. There is no accrual and no cash.
And we have a lot of latitude.
Monthly six hundred other C D Ds in the state of Illinois. They're basically doing their ad valorem tax methodology is the same way you're proposing generally.
I cannot tell you that because this is not ad valorem. Because ad valorem is based on.
Big difference.
Yeah, a huge difference. Yeah, and and I and I'm not sure how they handle theirs. I couldn't tell you. Within the state of Florida, it's pretty common.
Well, we're getting a lot of latitude, and we took it at that last meeting on developing the uh, benefit assessment.
Correct.
Lot of latitude.
Correct. But it's the board, finally, it's the board's decision. Ultimately, I'm just making a recommendation.
Well, if this was easy, we would have had a couple of people on enough to do the alternative method that we thought we were going to get. Clearly, that's not the case.
Got your uh. But it's fine.
Got your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item eleven D, Gateway Greens Association of East Right, uh, you have a letter in the.
Uh, so we received a request from the president of Gateway Greens Association, Mr. Ed, which is a temple. Uh.
On behalf of the board of the Gateway Greens.
On behalf of the board of Gateway Greens. But owners association. Um, the request came in, um, which I I guess has been for many years, you give a little bit better history than I can, probably Tony and Ed. But ultimately, there are some rear yard drains uh, that were conveyed to the HOA. For ownership and maintenance. Uh, the request from the HOA, which I believe was approved by uh, that board this morning. Uh, was to convey um, a handful of those rear yard drains to the district. Um, when we did cleaning of that basin uh, in air, we cleaned um, all of the pipes. Uh, so the pipes are clean, but the box, the inlet boxes do need some repairs and maintenance. They need to be raised. So uh, the request from the HOA is to convey those handful of rear yard drain inlets over to the district. Um, and that Tony, please.
And and also uh, assign the easement rights held by the association to the district for maintenance and also ingress, he has an.
And you're ready to sign that.
To for access to these in uh, facilities. And what I handed out today was, uh, it didn't make a meaningful, but this is in order to not have to have expenses, substantial expenses on. Uh, with regards to uh, the. Service, we can have an exhibit that indicates in cross patching areas, and then we have a, I'll call it a narrative in the legal description of the various laws. As to the extent and width of all these easements. And that would, that's a motion to provide direct interest in the district. One thing I wanted to point out to you is that in your board book. It shows roughly two fifty percent of the ones being requested. There's two more of us uh, segments. Yeah, that only shows packing. There shouldn't be another sheet to the south of that one. Uh, I brought a big area photo to show where they are, but uh, that's neither here nor there. The issue is what uh, Chelsea said is uh, pretty well described. So I didn't, I I thought that they had been cleaned, uh, because I saw the guys out there, but I did not know if they did anything else.
So Tony, can you just simplify this? What is the value to the district and why did we do this?
The, uh, uh, again, the asserted value to the district is district, but then have uh, control. Operational responsibility for part of a, call it a secondary drainage system that goes into the district's backbone system. That helps protect the properties in this particular neighborhood.
And to that, what's that recommendation always?
So typically, like what, like what we do with one R is that we recommend that it is provided in house and clean and repaired condition. Um, we were working to get an estimate from a contractor to raise whatever those inlets were. I think uh, as you and I talked, it was between five and ten thousand dollars based on our estimate. I don't have actual numbers, but.
Big piece of my number was TV, and I thought that we'd already TV, so I have no idea of what the actual, any repair that would have to be done.
So we'd have to get a contractor out to find out how much it would cost to raise or repair those those handful of inlet boxes, but. Um, ultimately, we would recommend approval, uh, but with the cleaning and those repairs.
So the association is going to have to pay for the cleaning and the raising.
That's that's not what we're asking for. We're asking for you to take them over, just like this district does on every place else. It handles stormwater management. None of our individual communities handle that. Our particular community doesn't even have it in its incumbents.
So the HOA is requesting as the, that the district take it as is.
As is.
Is the argument saying that?
Saying we want to take it in proper condition.
We did. Is the argument from your position, Ed, is it should be conveyed to the district in the beginning? Should never be conveyed to the HOA.
It would have been conveyed to the district in the beginning if. We used to have in the blink of an eye, the WCI hadn't pulled one over, because they were running the district, they were running the community. They.
But it's an issue now because there's.
It's an issue now because they didn't do their job thirty years ago.
And you guys don't have the money to.
I will, uh. I will support this if we get them, when at the point time to transfer, I want certification that there's no repairs that aren't exactly clean.
Say it again.
I will support this if. As presented to the to the to the board, they're a hundred percent clean and that there's no repairs or damage.
Well, I think that's what Chelsea's saying.
But I'm saying, the homeowners or whoever that HOA gets it to that point and then gives it to it, and then we take it and then on. Well, that that, that's why I'm saying the the proposal of the association is hesitant. I don't blame them. I'm saying, no, you get it all up to stuff, we'll take it. So, okay, interesting.
So, Tony, on this one, does Ed have to recuse himself?
Yeah, I don't think so because again, he's a member of the association. It doesn't adhere to a special better better game. The association is the entity. Uh, he's president of the association. He's again, it's no compensation to the president that is employed by, is a bunch of weed.
Ed, if you get it all cleaned up and cleaned up and whatever, why don't you just keep it?
Because we don't have that in our deal to do. We're not in the storm sewer business. It's not even in our covenants at all. We don't have anything.
That recommends Carol to to take it, but like, like what we do with. At least since I've been here, I can't speak to previous times, but what happened with Andrew Park, but I would suggest that you take it in good in good. And I agree.
Can I make a comment? There's a precedent for this.
Ed, would you, are you asking for public comment right now? And if you are, I suggest that they.
Is it related to the subject? Exactly.
So I I would.
Just have a board discussion first.
Hold on one sec. Bobby, did you have a comment?
No, I wasn't necess- I wasn't necessary sure what a resident could have pined on this. This is a board, you know, decision. I think I'm in line with fix it and then we'll take over just like how we did it with other things.
He's saying that everything is fixed and repaired, and then we take it over. He's in line with that, which is exactly where.
You have something along the line of.
Exactly. There's a precedent for this. When the roads were turned over from invasion. Joe Schofield, Reena, Mollican Preserve.
When the roads were turned over from Invasor, Joe Schofield, Reina Mollicom Preserve, when the roads were taken over by the C D D for the, I can't remember the name of the HOA, the backend Pelican Preserve, Prado, we made them fix those roads up. They spent a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars doing it before.
Oh, that was, that was Plaza.
Plaza, they had to get the roads in a hundred percent good shape before we took them.
Little bit different. Roads are part of covenants of the community. Storm sewers are not. That's the difference.
Okay, I just, I made them fix everything before we could take it.
Okay. I don't know where we go. I, I'll make a motion. We accept them if they're brought up to no repairs and they've all been in our plan. And we take it.
And then motion would include, from a technical perspective, with that caveat and that condition precedent that we're receiving, that to accept the assignment of the easement agreement is also a put claim bill of sale for the actual plates themselves.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah, subject to, uh, you mentioned about cleaning and, and bringing.
And no repair.
And that's a little version. I'll save it for discussion. Are we very clear on what, what they would need to do to bring them up to the minimum standard for us to accept?
Yeah, we would have Tetra Tech involved just for review, the, the plans that were approved and designed, and then just making sure that they need that. The pipes were cleaned. We cleaned those already. So it's really just, it's those inlet boxes that need to be repaired. So where the water drains and.
The manholes at the end of these segments, eight segments.
Are they all manholes or not little squares?
Some of them are little square.
Yeah.
The fact are they, they were done.
It's a variety.
But the whole thing is a disaster and it needs to be fixed. Some of them are inlets and their inlets buried. You got, they need to be repaired.
And your, uh, your estimate is a couple thousand dollars?
I'm guessing. I have no idea because I don't, I haven't seen. I thought that we had plans done and that it was not an issue of anything internally in the pipe. I do know, because I've seen it, the manholes or the inlets at the end are off on the.
And let's just say that the estimates come back and it's larger than what the, the HOA isn't willing to absorb internally, if that's the way the vote goes. What would be the repercussion? If you just don't do it?
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll do what Gateway did for thirty years.
You just don't do it?
We'll ignore it, leave it.
And then it'll, it'll have the impact on our, uh, in our overall system.
Well, the, the, the reality is, is that it is an endangerment to the people that live there because their drainage depends on that water getting into our system, our system, this out and road. What we're talking about is extending lines that we already own. We already own two, three, four manhole to manhole segments downstream of this that put it into the lake. What we're missing is the tail ends of each one of these four segments. And the reason why is because they put in extra lots, they squeezed it up, and they knew they couldn't comply with granting an easement in the proper width. So they turned it over to the neighborhood association. The neighborhood association, which they were in charge of, they wrote it, passed it on to the master.
And is it just a matter of it's never been an issue before because it's never an issue?
But we tried, what was it, twelve years ago, Tony? We, we started out.
Uh, I think it was eleven.
Eleven thousand four. Yeah, I think it was.
And at the time, it was a, a concern as to whether or not the authority existed under the covenants has existed and, uh.
So this, we're, you're trying to convey this to history.
Eleven years ago, eleven years ago, just the whole deal. Eleven years ago, we found out about it. We did not know about the provision that it was already in their covenants to us. We didn't know that. So what we did is we started the process of creating individual, individual easements from all these owners. Well, Chris Shields, their attorney, got in and said, hey, this isn't kosher. You don't need to do this. It's not theirs to get away. They've already given it away via the covenants that says there's an easement around every one of those lots.
And again, it's not an issue until now there's a cost involved and.
And we just want to get.
And you just want to get rid of it. Well, I think what ultimately was going to end up happening to happen, like, uh, I mean, I kind of agree that in order for anything to be conveyed to the district, it needs to be good shape. That's just, that's precedent. But I do think you guys are going to have to take a look at it and see if you're willing to do it. Because at the end of the day, if you're not willing to spend the money, you don't have the money this year.
Yeah, that's, that's what's going to happen. The, the, the first thing that's got to be knowledgeable is we got to know what is the problem? And once we know the problem, know the cost, then we can make a decision as to complying with that, to go ahead and sign the document.
I think we just proceed with, down the path of, of working with Tetra Tech to understand the, the scope and the cost that, that we would ask in order to, to convey.
But the motion I need to convey back is what you're describing is, is that essentially that, uh, the, the, the C D D will accept these, the transfer subject to all the documents in a condition, uh, acceptable to them, to be determined by Tetra Tech as to what the work is doing.
I think that's the message. That's it.
So what, what we typically do, like we do with Lennar is Tetra Tech goes out and inspects it. They put together a punch list and we provide that. So we would, we would do that same thing. We provide it to the HOA and say, call us when you get these items done. We'll come out and, and inspect and sign away.
And, and any of, any of this work, we can go to a handyman and essentially do the work. I mean, we're, we're talking two feet, three feet.
This is exactly what Copeland does. This is their niche.
But we've got to, that's the same thing, but we probably got to get prices. So, okay.
Okay.
Is, uh, somebody want to make that motion?
Well, yeah. I second it. You can call the vote.
I think we've had the discussion, call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Aye. And for the record, I do that is simply because I.
For the record, I have.
The man report as they as is.
Okay, for the record, I have the signed resolution from the association. We give it to Chelsea for the record to show that the board directed wants.
Item E, let me award consideration, uh, pond maintenance services for, uh, Raver Gateway. What is, which one is this?
It's the pond maintenance services for Gateway.
Oh, that's right, maintenance. Okay, okay.
So we have a selection advisory committee, um, convene and review the RFP that went out and their recommendation is to award to Cross Creek Environmental and not to exceed amount of one thou, one hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred forty dollars and ninety-one cents for pond maintenance service.
Was there any reason why they took the not low bidder?
The twenty thousand dollar cheaper one.
Um, the, from what I, from what I understand, the selection committee discussed was the concern of, uh, the staffing from that tower. Um, the, didn't really see a lot of experience with maintenance of ponds. Um, and Cross Creek has a lot of pond maintenance, and I, and I don't mean, I mean, maintenance in like a annual maintenance, not a restoration.
And we have them currently.
Correct.
We have currently Cross Creek.
Correct, yes.
So is there a, a motion to accept the staff's recommendation?
I, I, I hate to go against the committee's recommendation, but on the other hand, twenty thousand dollars, wow, right? And we have, Met Tower is a pretty reputable firm here. Maybe this is their foray into providing a new, less expensive service.
I agree.
Have we, have we had any additional, um, cost expenditures outside of our set contract with?
A little bit of a one-off that happens if we have a fire up by Daniel's.
Did we spend any in last fiscal year? Were there any additional expenses?
Not for things that they were contracted to do, no. I mean, it would just be like any other vendor with the extra. Um, I was, I sat in on the SAC meeting. I was not part of the SAC, but I ran the meeting because Randy was out. Um, they also had some concerns with the Amaldo staff that Met Tower had, and they were concerned that Met Tower would not be able to complete the ponds to hit every, to touch every pond in conservation area every month due to the size of their staff. Or they had confidence that Cross Creek had submission staffing and licensing to be able to handle it.
Here's the question, uh. Uh, and I would imagine this is part of the decision, but, you know, have we, has Cross Creek delivered exceptional service and adheres to their contract, uh, for, was it one year, two year?
They've been for probably four at least. They, we went to them after, um, a draft, when they closed up overnight, the hour and the doors changed. We've been with Cross Creek ever since.
The biggest, the biggest thing that I feel like we've had of this past year is the, the maintaining of littoral's. And so what did the?
I think you used the word exceptional.
Oh, or maybe, sorry, any expectations?
Well, I was going to say, I totally disagree with, uh, Cross Creek being exceptional. They have a lot of, lot of faults, uh, driving into people's yards, tearing up yards, uh, just not using common sense and doing their job. So I had that problem, but I don't know that anybody else.
Is any better, really, do.
I'm sorry.
Or is anybody else any better, any different? Laura, I have a question for you. Why do they specifically say which are not maintained by the Pelican Reserve Ponds?
Because you guys have your own contractor.
I know. See, the only reason that was in there.
Yes. So these are, these are for all the ponds except for the ones that your vendor is already taking care of.
Who, who do we have? I don't have any idea.
Solitude and Superior. You guys have two over there.
I mean, I would like to get to a point.
You're just not on here. Your vendor's not on this list.
I would like to get to a point, the amount of money that we've spent on ponds restoration, that we can find a vendor that does provide exceptional services. That, you know, we don't have to, uh, follow up with, uh, reminders of what our, our littoral maintenance, um, you know, depth is or things of that nature. And, and if it takes shopping around, uh, to do that, I.
Well, I, I, to that end, uh, Doug, intelligent, there's two different providers. One half is with one company, the other half with the other, and that was done intentionally to keep a spirit of competition. If one of them slips, they lose the other half. So we do have two different people doing it.
I, I, I think that, I think my point is, are we willing to spend twenty thousand more for what could be defined as the same service?
And I'm true.
And are we expected to get anything different? Like if I'm, if I'm paying twenty thousand dollars more for the company that we're using today, I expect them to perform higher than, than, than another company that's coming in twenty thousand less. Now, we might, we might go to less if we go a different direction, and maybe they don't have the manpower, but we don't know that. We're making assumptions.
We have, we have, you're talking about Met Tower. I was just saying we have representatives of Cross Creek here. If somebody wants staff.
I think we have provisions written in the contracts and I do for non-performance where they're a lot more strict than they were in the past. So that's part of what Chelsea and Randy and Tony have been working on, is to make sure that we have, there's repercussions for failure to perform.
Well, they're all thirty-eight for that, right? Thirty-eight, you notice?
Uh, it can go up to ten, yeah. But I, I know, I mean, yes, we've had issues with Cross Creek with some of the things, but I will say that I know of Al calls and we have something that needs to get taken care of. They come and take care of it. So it's not like she waits and has to be asked for it to be taken care of.
I know that we do, uh, we do reviews, so Al monitors, and I don't know, I don't know if she has a scorecard or, or whatever. Are you the representative from Cross? Yeah, sure.
Where is she working again?
Oh, there's George.
They're putting together a pond inspection checklist, basically, right now.
So, so George, if you want to say, but, yeah, they don't buy it itself. Yeah, George, Paul, Cross Creek Environmental. Yeah, so here's my, here's my point, and I don't, I'm not close to it, so I don't, I can't really say what the quality of, of the work is. Uh, I do know that the amount of money, like I stated earlier, the amount of money that we've spent on restoration. Um, and residents that, uh, sit on these lakes, uh, are, are, uh, are very aware of what happens to them. Um, we hear about it. If, if there's, you know, if there's tire tracks or, you know, things become over.
This is monthly maintenance, not restoration.
No, 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 but we've spent so much restoration.
Right.
Monthly maintenance would be something we have to do in order, you know, for us to continue the, the quality. So what I would ask, um, is, you know, a commitment for this next year is I want us to be sitting at this table and say, it's a no brainer that we need to renew this, this contract because of the exceptional service. And the fact that we can't say that today, um, I, I mean, it's, it's not a red flag for me, but that should be the level of service that, that we, that we, that we need. And, and I, I don't, I don't expect you to guarantee that, but that's the bar that I think we set when it comes to pond maintenance. We need you to be exceptional. Uh, you can't just meet expectations in today's environment. Does that make sense?
Yes, and we understand that. And, um, I mean, we have, I mean, like they said, they do monthly sweeps and reviews of each of the ponds. Al and the, and our managers do that every month. Any issues that are out there, we immediately address. Um, and, you know, and that includes even allergies, submerged vegetation, but have you. Um, and I mean, the way that they did this bid, you know, they had qualifications. Well, the price was only eight percent of the qualifications. Okay, so everything else was based on what our experience is, what our property sizes that we also take care of. Like the villages up in North Florida, like Alia's, Alia's Collier down south, we have huge properties that we take care of. And we have a lot of experienced personnel. We have lots of equipment. I mean, and I've been managing Gateway Lakes for twelve years. Okay, I've been with this company for three. You've been with me for three. I was here with Aqua Genics for eight years before that, nine years. I was the manager, okay?
And it's, and that was part of the reason why we went, well, because your historical knowledge.
Yes.
Uh, Chelsea, really quick, what was the, uh, did this contract increase?
No, I haven't, I made it. Two hundred thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
So you come in less than what you did last?
Yes, and I did want to remind you that three years we didn't, we had no increase, and I actually decreased it slightly, slightly for another this contract. So we haven't had any increases in your, in your cost.
Right.
You do have Met Tower here. If you'd like to invite them on. They want to talk.
Yeah, the only experience with that, with Met Tower, like maintenance, we had it on one pond when we were doing. We had a biological problem and, and they took care of that for about three years or more. Microbes died.
And I, you know, I think we've got a good relationship with Met Tower as well.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We've got a good relationship with Met Tower as well and other.
They're doing, they're doing.
Sunny Back is Met Tower Environment. Yeah, we're doing, we do quite a few of the lake bank restoration projects for you guys. And we've done work over in Pelican as well for them. At the meeting, one of the, the issue that they had when they were talking about the questions they had about our staffing was in the bid proposal, we said we'd be here for about, I think it was three or four months, um, days a month. But that was with multiple techs that would be there, and that was something that they asked about, and we discussed it and told them you know, staffing isn't an issue. It's just the way that it got written up for the, the proposal.
Yeah, okay. All right. I don't think I have anything. It's the only thing I would say is, you know, part of what my philosophy is, if you meet expectations, I have no problem with, with, or doing that contract or rewarding, just I'm sure if, if, you know, Met Tower was doing work on a, on a pond, if they do the work, we would absolutely reward them, you know, with the ability to bid on other projects. So I don't have any problem going with staff's recommendations.
Somebody want to make motion?
I move to award the contract in the tower for a hundred seventy-eight thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars and ten cents, the low bidder.
All right, you go second. Handle discussion. Oh, no, something, so, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Next item, eleven, uh, F, Timber Ridge Association Request to Waive Connection Fee.
So, um, this item, I apologize, at the last meeting I failed to bring it up. Uh, Rock Bob did show up at the meeting and, um, didn't mention that at the end, but we wanted to bring it back as a formal agenda item. So the HOA has requested the waiver of that connection fee, um. You know, going back and looking at aerial photography, it's hard to tell, uh, but I did notice a control box um, that was put in almost immediately after, um, the development was installed. Uh, we have never received a connection, uh, fee that is technically considered an illegal tap. Uh, but there, there's been no measurement, uh, or payment for the water usage. Um, and even since we first found out about this over a month ago, uh, we're still waiting on information from the HOA in order to figure out what size meter they want. That way we can put it in. Um, in the meantime, the water's still been running, so I need resolution from this board on if you would like to waive their connection fee request. And how you would like to proceed.
I would, Mr. Turner, may I just quickly also clarify the record. Westinghouse WCI was never the district's contractor. They were developed.
Yes.
I know, but it was made by a resident that that was our contractor. No, Westinghouse was not the district contractor.
Obviously, obviously, somebody dropped the ball that it wasn't those people. My deal would be is I'd make a motion that they pay for the cost of the meter, the meter box and that type of stuff, but I would waive the connection fees.
Why?
Because I think they got screwed by the developer.
Did they get for, my thing is they got free water for twenty years, so.
Yeah, that's right. That's a.
You know, but, you know, it's very, it's very easy to say, you know, what they did and what we didn't, and I, I mean, I, I I'm very careful with the words I use, were fraudulent, malicious, items like that. I wanted to really stay away from it. I'm looking at, you know, giving residents, they had water. It, it's unfortunate that it happened, but they had free water for twenty years. And we're looking at a, a connection fee. If they want to make payments for this connection fee, because it was not a budget item, I'm willing to do that. But at this point, I, I wouldn't be opposed to waiving the fee.
I think that we didn't do our job for twenty years. We should have known this. We should have known this.
That doesn't diminish the benefit that they got in. I mean, I'm probably thinking.
Uh, Mike, I stand by what I said. They paid for the, they paid for the meter, they paid for the center and all that. But I would, uh, go along with waiving the connection fee.
If they paid the original rate for the connection fee.
It'd be higher.
Back when? What was it?
It was more.
Really?
Yes.
Yeah, I think Leslie provided a calculation. It's an attachment, uh, to this document as to what she calculated that would be the fee, um. Twenty twenty-five, be nine thousand two hundred sixty. twenty twenty-five, be nine thousand two hundred sixty dollars and twenty-seven cents. Just by two thousand and three schedule fourteen four oh one seventy-three. So it's a nice calculation. So they're saving five thousand based on this, and they got twenty years of free water.
It's those other fees that if you look on there, that, and, uh, ever since I've been in Gateway, I've had questions about whoever the moron was that put together that fee schedule. You couldn't even get to understand what it's meant and what we were billing people for. So I think that's an apples and oranges comparison right there. Uh, it might be one of those items like facility connection fee, eighty-six seventy-five versus ninety-two sixty, I might buy that, but those other fees are a joke. They had no, they made no sense. If you read the original deal.
Well, typically connection fees for net, right? I mean, in most environments.
Yes.
I mean, the fact that we, you know, we have missed this.
Anyway, for, for a long time. I'll make that motion.
I think it's just, let's right the ship, uh, and if they're paying for the meter, right? What, what are we asking them to pay for? Or what do they agree to pay for?
I guess part of the question for clarification, there's a motion, there's no second, even though there's been some discussion, is the meter related cost is the same. And what does that cost consist of, Chelsea? Do you know?
The cost of the actual meter itself.
And like, and installation?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just drop that.
Nineteen sixty twenty-seven and forego the seventy-three hundred. That one. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying it. Staff is recommending denial.
Right.
No, my, my question, my question was to say, the meter related costs are the meter related costs. I have no problem with that.
Do you, do you have a second to your motion?
I don't know.
That, that, that hurt a second. How many homes are impacted? How many homes are in Timber Ridge?
One forty-five, one forty-five. Okay, if we don't have a, if we don't have. I don't have a second of the motion. Is there an alternative motion?
Yes, I didn't, I moved to deny the request for, um, waiving the connection fee.
I'll second your motion.
You have a discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Well, I'm gonna say aye. It's fifty-one months. Fifty-one, so.
I'm nay.
Nay and I'm nay. Okay, three to two, the, uh, motion was approved. Okay. FGUC, FGUA waiver.
What, what does that mean? What did you just say?
That means we, we just decided to deny their, their request to waive.
Okay, okay, yeah.
The next item is another waiver request. This is from FGUA as part of the inter-local agreement. Uh, their request is to waive the meter deposit. Uh, can you agree to that? And, no, that's. Uh, so FGUA is, they provided a letter, um, their main point is it's twenty-five hundred bucks. It's a waiver. It's typically a meter waiver. Um, their point is this is a bi-directional connection. And so basically if we charge a meter deposit, if and when, if it ever happens that water comes the opposite direction, they would most likely charge us with a meter deposit.
The agreement doesn't provide for us to pay their fees. The agreement provides for them to pay our fees.
So there are, it calls for FGUA to pay all costs of this interconnect, uh, but.
This was twenty-five hundred dollars, that's it.
You already approved the waiver of the, uh, connection fees earlier in the year for this project. So they're asking for a waiver of the deposit.
I move to reject the, uh, request to waive the deposit.
I'll second that.
We have two seconds. Okay. Any, any other questions, discussion? All in favor of denying the waiver, say aye.
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 Close. By the. Hope that made the Timber Ridge people feel any better, uh. Item H, easement agreement request, uh, to Bario, here we go.
This item, you asked, I believe Carol requested at the last meeting when this, this item came in front of you to send it back to the ponds subcommittee. The ponds subcommittee, uh, recommended, uh, allowing the easement encroachment. I believe P pack did P pack as well.
Yes.
So recommend approve, approving the encroachment. Uh, so now it is back in your.
Recommended denying.
It was not, no, uh.
No, approval, they recommended approval.
Yes, but P packs was not unanimous. So there was not a unanimous.
It passed.
It was not unanimous.
Forty-two.
So this is, if all the pressure memory, this, uh, property owner went to the city of Fort Myers for a pool permit. Uh, they were notified at the time of the permit approval that no vegetation, uh, was to be in the lake maintenance easement. Staff, I believe, had, uh, been in contact with them, um, many, many months, many moons ago. Um, vegetation was installed, even though it was not approved on the permit, um, nor, you know, was staff made aware. Um, district staff doesn't go on to Pelican Ponds, that's the jurisdiction of the pond, Pelican Pond Subcommittee. What brought this to a head was the property owner went to close out their permit with this, with the city. Um, and we notified them that there was landscaping installed in the district season without our approval. Um, the city is waiting on your decision on, of proving this or not, and then they can close out.
What, what kind of landscaping?
But I think there's pictures in there.
I didn't see the pictures, but, uh, I, my next words is, I'm okay with the pool. But they willfully put the shrubs in and we were told not to. So the shrubs cut it. They put the shrubs in, in violation of what they had asked for. Well, I'll make the motion that, that we approve the pool, but the other encroachments, the shrubs have to be removed.
What, what portion of that five B is the pool landscape?
Not very much. Oh.
I thought the pool was okay.
You know, it's a little bit in.
The pool was like right up.
Maybe it's a little bit. But the shrubs go back, and they don't go back a lot. But they put it in and they should. So you're.
I second that motion.
But, but I want to just make sure what, because I think I agree with you, I want to make sure what I'm agreeing with. You're denying the encroachment request. Or we're accepting the pool or the landscaping.
Oh, I'm not sure the pool goes in it.
Well, that's what's on, on this background says.
Their survey, what they called out is a five-foot encroachment into the LME for landscaping.
Can you go on to where? That's what I thought. That's what I.
Hard to read that.
Well, I agree with Bob. Landscape is got to come.
We don't, do we, we don't have.
They were told not to do it. They did it.
And is that just, there's not a pool cage or anything, right? It's just landscaping?
No, there's a pool cage, but all that's.
I think the pool cage is.
The pool cage and everything is in by.
Is all test.
Probably.
And I, I don't want to did it, probably was the contractor. Nevertheless, it's, it's wrong.
Okay.
Yeah, it appears the encroachment, of course, is still.
Landscaping with motion, and motion in a second to deny the, uh, encroachment into the LME for landscaping. Is there a discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close.
Right.
Reward consideration, pond bank forty-seven. And I want to make sure this one here, I, I thought I heard what. Uh, Doug should still be on, uh.
Okay, let me see if he's.
Yes, I'm lost.
He's there.
Didn't see you back there.
Yeah, still like to get clarification of the question I'd asked earlier because I'm still confused. When we do these projects, I thought we told the work, the drive, or the, uh, contractors, the vendors, what the scope of the work is. How can we end up with two different proposals in a job that we tell them what to do? They don't tell us what to do.
Doug, you want to take that?
There's, yeah, there's two different.
From the, the technology, you mean, Ed?
Yeah, well, I'm looking at this, uh, background and it shows Copeland based their deal on sixteen hundred and fifty linear feet. Extreme based theirs on fourteen eighty-six linear feet. Is Extreme not doing two hundred linear feet of the lake that needs to be done?
No, they, they're not doing two hundred feet of the lake that did not need to be done. Uh, Copeland measured the entire pond and bid on restoring the, the entire pond. Extreme divers bid on the areas that needed to be restored from the.
And there's different method.
Number of inches in the erosion.
The, the area, the linear footage should be the same.
No, let me help. So the, when we put the backup, go back a year, a year plus. Pelican, the pond subcommittee hired Tetra Tech to do an assessment of all of their ponds and provide one year footages of what needed to be repaired and Tetra Tech's eyes. And so when staff compiled the ITQ to go out, because this is the, the short process, we put in the number based on that Tetra Tech report.
Which was?
Which was the.
Fourteen fifty, sixteen fifty, which the higher number, right?
No.
No, the fourteen eighty.
Fourteen eighty-six. Copeland went out, measured himself, based on his recommendation, is only suggesting one thousand four hundred and eighty-six linear feet. And so that's why you have a discrepancy. So he.
Copeland's the one that's got the highest.
Copeland's got a little higher. The other variable is one's putting in the dirt side, Beth, the rock dirt blend.
Well, don't worry about that, Bob. I'm just saying.
Well.
You're putting in the product.
Not saying you want to get done.
Doug, Doug did a apples, apples comparison based on the linear foot price.
And they're happy.
And they're making this recommendation.
So, so to be clear, Copeland, their linear square feet is above and beyond what was in the, the, the bid linear foot numbers.
The Tetra Tech number.
The Tetra Tech numbers. Yeah, so that's why there's a discrepancy in linear foot. Copeland's saying, I, we're going to do more.
Yes.
Than the fourteen.
We think we need to do more.
And so the pond subcommittee is recommending approval for this pond, pond forty-seven, to Extreme with a, it's a new pilot method of dirt rock blend uh, that they'd like to try on pond forty-seven. Um, and P pack also recommended approval of this last Thursday. So now it is in front of you. Now they, Pelican does have, uh, the funding for this. Doug, I don't mean to take, you know, in any of your.
Scroll this up, Laura, please.
This way? What do you, what do you, what do you want me?
Okay, I was looking for that recommendation. So the, the committee is recommending that, like, go with Extreme for the lower bid.
Yes.
And so did P pack.
On, on forty-seven.
On forty-seven, so, thank you.
Forty-seven, okay.
Yeah, so I'm making a motion to approve, uh, aw, award consideration of pond forty-seven bank restoration to Extreme Drive, uh, Extreme Divers as the.
He's making so.
Uh, what's the?
Most responsible, responsible bidder.
Yes.
Thank you. And I assume you'll second it.
Thank you.
Can I throw a wrench on this?
Go ahead, what?
This is just for pond bank restoration. This is no, no clearing of anything. This is just.
That is correct.
Because this is maintenance.
That's correct. And, and the pond group looked at it and Jim Latham's here, and they are comfortable as well as is Extreme, that they don't have to do it anymore.
What else would they?
But I don't understand what.
The clear cutting of the LME.
We're not getting cleared.
They're not.
They're saying they don't need to do.
There are, from, from what I could tell based on LEPA, there are eight prop, what pond is this, forty-seven?
Forty-seven.
There are eight properties that have landscaping in the LME.
And Ed, we are going to tackle that.
We use, we use that, we use that argument here and got defeated. I.
Ed, we are going to tackle the issue as a community. Because we're now getting.
But hey, this, Bob, I've got to go back and explain to people.
I understand.
How's come you let them get away with it and we got clear cut?
We don't.
Same issue as maintenance. It's good for the goose, it's good for the dander.
I do not disagree with that.
I disagree.
I do not disagree. And we are going to take steps.
I think that they need to be informed that those ponds, the same, this is exact same argument that Brad and other ones, uh, uh, Met Tower have made, which I totally agree with. They can work around these things, and then the issue comes down to our maintenance. This is maintenance. It is good for maintenance here, it's good for maintenance there, it's clear cut.
Can I give you one example?
I, I think we, I think we have to go through the standard, which is where it has to be in scope, and then there are waiver options for those individuals, and we will hear them on a one-on-one.
Yes.
Have to do that.
Either with one oh nine, we talked about one oh nine, and had eight or nine trees, and we said, okay, the Royals can stay, and the others can.
We gave those, we gave those other people, we gave those other people. They want to come in for an encroachment for each of these eight, I think, I counted twelve, so. But, uh.
But, but I think what Chelsea's trying to say is.
This is, there is no cost accounted for on this bid.
Correct.
For removal, that's right.
And then I would suggest that those owners need to come in and file the paperwork for an encroachment for, uh, their, their. That's, it's their.
And I, I disagree with that, but that's a separate issue from this.
I understand. But, but the bid, the bid, the contractor, the contractor was the contractor.
Right.
And he, he's not getting in the middle of policy. We didn't allow him before, so why should he be in there now? I don't think they want in the middle on this one. Uh, I, I totally agree with the motion to, uh, award to forty-seven to them. But on a separate issue, these owners need to be clarified that they have to come in.
So you're enforcing clear.
We are enforcing clear cut. Yeah.
So.
Until we get this issue.
Did you?
Well, 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 we are not enforcing clear cut on this.
We are. They have it. That's our policy.
We are. Well, there's something in the contract, now they call.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's not part of it. Okay, okay.
Let's do the motion.
I agree. Let's separate, let's do the motion.
Okay.
Motion was made to go with the Extreme Divers on this pond forty-seven, have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Now someone wants to make another.
It should be a motion.
We just follow the deal and staff notifies, send out a letter to each of the owners that are there, that are in violation, that they need to come in and file an encroachment easement. I'm going to take this, I learned something in the army the hard way. You don't like a rule, enforce it.
Hold on. So as part, as part of what you just approved for Brad, there is survey. So he will need to go out and he'll have to survey what, like, what we, what we talked about, the twenty-foot LME. And then, then from that point, we can contact those property owners. Now, the removal of that landscaping is not in Brad's contract that is in front of you. So that's not saying the pond subcommittee can work with the landscape subcommittee and have Amerescap or whomever remove the landscaping. I just want to be clear that.
I understand.
It's a requirement, but it's not the other cost that you go over.
Yeah, so my suggestion, I mean, do the north to proceed, the north proceed limited solely to the survey scope. To identify, so they don't proceed in any other scope.
Well, if the owner comes in and files the, because they don't want it to be clear cut, and they want to file the encroachment, file the five hundred dollar fee and all that, then it'll come to us for consideration.
Okay, I can't believe I'm going to say this, but I'm going to say it anyway.
Do I need to sit back?
Pond forty-seven. The owner's property is five foot into the pond, in some cases, five, six.
The landscaping.
The land.
Landscaping is five foot.
No.
No.
You mean.
The owner's lot is, there's been significant erosion. It's similar to, uh, something we talked about. At this time, we have no intention of doing anything of that, other than restoring a four to one. This does not call for refurbishing, and we may do that in the future.
But that's, that's a, that's a call you guys made.
And I just want to make sure that we're all aware, and I don't want that to be anything other than right in front of all of us.
Okay.
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 There's no good with what we've got.
Then I'm, I'll change my motion. I make the motion to take, and after the contractor has established those lines of what the deal is, then you go to the communities or to the owners that are encroaching and notify them that they've got.
Well, no, that's, that's standard process anyway.
It's standard process.
So I don't need to amend your motion, that's just, that's direction.
Pond subcommittee.
Do that.
But we will work with.
Yeah.
Then with.
Just how we do it here on, on our pond.
That's.
You have, we don't have a subcommittee, we just do it.
If we go out in the water to find the thing, we may have twenty feet in the trees beyond it.
Okay, got you.
But because of what's there, the tree's in.
Well, yes, and that was kind of my argument earlier, is if, if you're, if you're looking for your mark and your mark is now underwater.
We've got some marks underwater.
Then five feet.
Is a lot.
Could, could be the difference between your, your.
You're in.
Your easement or you're out, so.
That's my fault.
That's, I mean, there, there is some special consideration in some of these areas. So let's move on to the next one.
Let's go to forty-eight.
Now, same comment.
Same issues.
Same comment, there's eleven properties based on LEPA, which Bob, I would love to show you LEPA at some point, and Jim too, I would love to show Jim LEPA and the easement document, the easement lines. Uh, but there, from my gaging off of that, there are eleven properties that potentially have landscapes.
I had to sit over there. So we follow standard operating procedures.
Yep.
We approve the recommendation, and then as part of the process, we survey and we notify.
This pond is for Copeland, and it's for coconut mesh, which is the standard for Pelican. Uh, they do have to transfer some money in from their reserves, so that'll have to be, um, also approved and that was.
Again, it's a deep back decision.
Well, these were all recommended from ponds and from the pack, but just letting you know that.
They recommending.
Copeland.
So they're going with the.
Well, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Six hundred and fifty dollars.
It's nothing.
Here's again, we have that same issue with linear footage.
Absolutely.
Okay. So is there a motion to?
I'm making a motion, we accept the proposal from the P pack. To award forty-seven, forty-eight to Co- uh, to Copeland.
Copeland on the basis that it is the lowest responsive, responsible.
Yeah.
Most convenient.
Okay.
Thank you. Good question. Lobby, any questions?
No questions. So I'll second his motion.
Okay, I think we got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Thank you all. Great, great.
We have two months.
District manager.
Two months worth of monthly reports and, um, before I go into that, I.
It was just last week, that's why we did.
Okay, I, I, I feel that under local achievements and recognition, recognition, uh, as part of revamping all of the job descriptions. Uh, this year, one of the things for two of our, most of our administrative staff is to go to the Florida Association of Special Districts, SASI. Where I got my certified district manager and so did Laura. Uh, they offer a certified district administrative professional. And so we had two staff attend last week and receive their CBA success. So that would be Georgia and Randy. So I just have to, um, give them kudos and congratulations on becoming a certified district administrative professional. With that, we'll turn it over to more.
How long was it? Two, three days?
Three days.
Three days.
Uh, used for Orlando?
No, it was actually right there.
It was right by Sanibel. Any questions for me?
November and December reports since you guys took December off.
How do you feel the, um, the, uh, LCSO? Uh, we're still getting.
Just started back up.
Yeah, they just started back up in November. Uh, we have the same person doing patrols each time, which is great. She gives fantastic reports. As I'm sure if you look, you can see in here, um, she's there twice a week. Um, she just stepped in, introduced herself, I guess, meter final, which was nice, because, um, we actually requested to have her because she's so thorough with what she reports on. Including her community when she goes into each of the individual communities.
Campbell?
Yes.
That's who does, that's in our community.
Yes, yep. And she, she gives us great reports.
I don't know if this was by design or if it just happened to be someone on duty, um, that had a kid up here, but someone parked their, um. Their vehicle with their lights on, it was LCSO, I think, or it could have been check, sure, I don't know, I can't remember. Both parked on, white in front of the no parking on the right-hand side of the fields with their lights on. No one would even come close to parking on that side. It was a beautiful thing. It was like one car, white.
Two rings last night.
So I, I don't know, I don't know if that was by design, but it was the most brilliant thing that I've seen. Because it had started getting back at the beginning of seasons, they always, you know, if there's not road, they will, they will push the envelope. And so I've seen people start parking. Whoever it was sat there and had their lights on and it was like, everyone was well ahead.
It wasn't, it wasn't a patrol car with nobody inside of it. One of those scared.
Which would have been fine. I mean. But you know, I did not.
Anything else?
Also have blue and red lights. Understood.
The only question I had for you, Laura, RFP twenty-five dash zero six BW.
Which report? No, I mean, which month?
January sixteenth report.
December?
It says January sixteenth. I'm looking.
They're all dated January sixteenth.
It's, it's in November or December.
November or December.
Under RE at the top with the.
That's probably here to say November or December.
Yeah, here. It's, it's just January, I know they don't like, uh, December, December.
December.
Thank you.
Uh, we talk about the, uh, twenty-five oh six BW. Are we still on track that we're going to open that comes to the board February twentieth? And this is basically the landscaping and irrigation maintenance contract.
Yeah, they have their selection advisory committee.
They have it next week.
So we're, it hasn't been worked, yeah, we got the recommendation.
No.
Yeah, but it's gone.
Yes.
The, um, landscape subcommittee needs, has the selection committee next week and then right behind it, they have their regular meeting to make the recommendation.
Yes. It's, it's intense, it's on schedule.
Okay.
A week from today.
Anybody else have anything?
I just have one comment for, um, my recommendation, if you cascade this down to carry is for direction for the, the parks and rec committee. I think we should shift their focus, uh, before it was validating what amenities we need and what might we have in parts. I think we shift that. Now that we have approved, um, at least based on the parts, I think we should shift their focus to more vision planning for. Uh, programs and events moving forward. So now we should do two things. One, start to plan. Uh, when we do get these amenities, how can we, um, how can we create programs, uh, and events, uh, but overall, knowing the inventory that we have.
Doug?
Knowing that, uh, you know, the, the facility, the amenities that we have today. How do we enhance usage? How do we enhance, uh, demographics that use them? Um, and more importantly. If we could do an audit of kind of gateway versus our community facilities. So a great example is Stony Brook. We used to have a great softball inter-community league. Uh, it, it was one of the, you know, it was a great time. We had like four teams of play. Then participation dropped. And now we can't even get enough people to play. So what happens to our field? It's the, it, it's unused. Uh, and I think the, the position in the past was that we don't have enough Stony Brook people, we're just not going to have a league. So maybe we get parks, maybe work with Kerry, how do we, you know, take up, uh, you know, a facility like within Stony Brook, like the softball field? How do we create maybe a gateway of leagues, whether it's over fifty or, you know, whatever. Let's understand the demographics and let's.
If you want to start a, a program or a plan to start operation of this field once we get it built.
Yeah, I, I want, I want the parks committee now be focused on. Uh, utili- utilization of our existing facilities. And once we build the park, how, how can we have programs in place? Or what programs should we be thinking about? Events, how do we, you know, how do we use, you know, uh, facilitate better events and, and, and our area? And another thing I'll say is, if you look at, let's say Pelican's a great example. The amount of programs they have for their seniors, which are based on their population, um, how do we extend some of that over to the gateway area? Uh, you know.
Well, one, one of the ones that will drive will be pickleball. That will be a hot issue.
Chelsea, all this is shared amenities. So can we?
We're all on the same page right now because Chelsea and I were literally just having this conversation earlier this week about, uh, developing out what the programming is going to look like as the new facility is built. And then what the current events are right now and what we want the future to look like. So we're, yeah.
And how, how can, you know, what communities would be willing to, uh, to help support, uh, a gateway league as an example, like pickleball or tennis? So Stony Brook's got tennis courts and pickleball. If we build a gateway league and be able to have, you know, use, you know, Stony Brook on Wednesdays from six to eight or, you know, um, you know, some of.
There are Pelican teams that I'm sure would love to participate.
And it's, and for Pelican, what a great example. If you're, if I live in, in Gateway and I'm over fifty-five, I should be. I should be invited to go play or, you know, and maybe it's for.
Team wise, absolutely.
You know, uh, yeah, and, and for me, the biggest gap we have on the gateway side is we have stuff for our kids up to sixteen. You know, we have soccer, we have, you know, uh, flag football, that's great. We have very limited, almost zero gateway sponsored programs for seniors. And as someone that's now fifty-three and closer to being that, right? That was like, we were still encouraging you.
Every community of, uh, of leagues.
Yeah, exactly. You know, uh, so it's something we should be looking.
And outside teams do come and play in Pelican.
I mean, it'd be really cool to have, you know, Stony Brook versus Pelican or versus Gateway Drains or create some, you know, uh, some.
Rivals. Great topic for the.
So I'm glad you're thinking about it and, and, and I'm not talking about just. You know, what do we do? What you, what projects do we have? Are they adequate? What do we have for bid? I don't know what to call it. Uh, and then for seniors. Absolutely.
Anything else for Dan?
No, thank you.
No.
Mr. Mano, he's having this. All right.
Anything else?
Utilities.
Oh, and is Dan, Dan, oh, who, 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 who? I didn't, didn't get. ITQ twenty-five oh one for the mill reline on, uh. Aviano and Rabena. Where does that stand? Does that?
Going to the next safety security. I mean. Yes. Quotes are back, um. All they came in a little high. Uh, two of them can actually be considered under the ITQ process. The other are gonna, the. Help preserve Bolvar is going to have to be considered for it through a formal process because it came in way over the one ninety-five.
Even though we're cutting it into thirds?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Maybe cut it into thirds, just the standalone, every single quote that we got back, and I believe we got five.
Seven.
Yeah, we got several, several back, a couple of safe piggyback contracts and they still weren't, even the piggyback contracts weren't the lowest bidders. Um, the lowest bid across the board. Can't say the name yet, but, um. Okay, so it was Atlantic Southern across the board for all three of those, and those projects, uh, two of those projects would be able to be done underneath the pricing thresholds. Without having to make it a formal bid. Pelican Preserve was over, over the threshold.
Kind of figured that.
So, and that was from the entrance of, uh, Pelican Preserve all the way up to the doorway.
Feedback, obviously, good decision. As down, I say, want to take off and bite it one year.
Yep.
Now in full well, that the total cost could be over.
Jimmy, help them.
Nope.
Uh, it's like the FPNA lighting project is moving right along.
Yeah, they're about seventy percent done. They're on gateway right now, working their way down the rest of the way, as much as, uh, Mr. Pinko.
Have we ever seen an analysis of whether saving money to this or?
Nobody failed to do their job.
Ask Chelsea, she can resurrect it, you can get that.
The last scene last time.
Okay. Anything else? Who else you got?
Uh, and then for utilities.
That's awesome. That's a hard question.
Where, there was, we keep asking like Stony Brook, um. Uh.
The solution.
Yeah, bus station. Um. He, uh, the consultant we hired, he came out on December thirty, had to do a site visit and collect some gas samples for analysis. He's, as far as I'm aware of, collected all the data that he needs and he's working on the draft report. We're anticipating that sometime in mid-February.
I think it's all was reported.
Okay.
Okay, anybody have anything else?
Oh, you know, easy.
All right.
Um, I, one last thing, um, I will be going on a cruise on Saturday.
Yeah.
Okay, I took a book, a page out of your book. It's my first cruise in a year. Uh.
I'm done.
So it'll be Saturday to Saturday. I did get the internet package. I will be checking the details periodically, but if you need anything, please contact Laura. Uh, but you can always email me, uh, if, or, or text us on your iPhone if you have an Android. I, it's great, but, um, email me if you need anything. I'll be checking it periodically.
Saturday to Saturday, the, what, the what?
Nineteenth to twenty.
Eighteen.
Eighteen to twenty seven.
I don't like how I get a lot of things done while she's calling.
Anything else? Don't eat.
Yes, we go up to my list.
Yep. I'll get a paper. Anyway, that makes Austin back when I used to go off.
I think we have all the deeds, I think they've been filed and Laura, we had a little issue. Elite County Clerk is an experimental clerk's office. When you record documents, you need to also, on deeds, provide a photo ID.
Yes.
Of the.
With your.
Signing up ahead of the grant.
Design and.
Yes. So that, that's, they volunteer themselves to be experimental, to pain in the neck. But I appreciate her doing.
So this will drop off, it's not completed?
That's completed, yes. Elite Health Properties, again, now that they are nonprofit, that issue doesn't exist anymore on a go-forward basis. And I don't know what's going to happen in the prior one. Now, admin building, that's, uh, working with Randy on that and most recently on the insurance, Randy giving up all the necessary certificates.
Did Russ include that in his calculations?
I knows about it, I'm sure he did, we'll make sure.
Okay.
I think I informed him like that a while back, I'll just make sure.
Okay.
Include that. And then I guess one of the questions we need to also ask him is now, that the Garrett buildings, that we take, where the buildings are taken down to the apartment complex. If they have the building permits and site and VOs for that. Does Russ need to have that or his analysis also?
I, we talked to him about that, but I'll make sure I bring it up.
Okay. How many hundreds of units are going?
Me, for the numbers.
Yeah, two hundred, somebody. Yes, under, so that's, that's changing the, uh. Assessment methodology, we're getting working with Russ and staff on that. And I'll prepare the notices similar to what we did in twenty twenty for the public hearings. Uh, the infrastructure easements for the, uh, we have, I think we have them all.
Those two, have they come back yet?
They're all drafted.
Okay.
But they're all, they're all drafted.
I was told that PPC has approved it, I don't know if they signed it. They were looking for a notary, I told them.
Well, come on, pretty much.
And the same thing with, uh, Palavo. I'm disappointed they didn't come, so I'll check. I do appreciate the help. How many else in the Plaza, it's like, what Plaza condominium is the correct entity, there's a touch of confusion, the way. The condominium, condominium documents were prepared and modified, but I do appreciate how we Nelson's helped on that. And the Genopee, we're still going back and forth with them. I know, we're, we're close, we're going ninety-nine point nine percent, I think, done. The major remaining issue is the extent of liability for any damages. Uh, so we, I think we had that in the next month, maybe February, Board meeting, Nelson. Yeah.
I would say it's fine.
On the Pelican Reserve Tree Line Colonial Sign Parcels, I guess we're just waiting the appraisal and board directions. Uh, we provided the, the appraiser with the, uh. Special development area documents that show what that property can be useful, what it's zoned, uh, so hopefully it'll come back.
Does it look like?
I don't know. I've, I've not seen the appraisal and, uh, I should come back. The, uh. Always board policies and procedures, I just need to meet the board members. And I'll do that before the first of the month to have some initial conversations. The, uh, competitive solicitations, again, just working on all those various ones that, that are pending and revising them, appropriate, working with Arcadis and Chelsea and Laura, I noticed.
Yeah, I got one.
Yes.
The archives.
Now, how are we coming with scanning that? Are we done with scanning that?
Slowly, surely.
So it's.
A lot of the maps, when Austin was an intern, he did a lot of the big maps. Um, it's a matter of, we need to get up there. Our goal, we, we just actually just talked about it Tuesday, was to get it done before we move to that.
We're not taking that.
To win that.
Downtown Littenmore. They call them, they pick them up, they take them, they scan them, they shred them, they bring us the disc back and it's labeled and.
So is that more cost effective than hiring an intern just to literally copy it off?
They have the equipment, that's the proper size.
You need to make sure.
Yeah.
Some stuff for sure. I didn't, I didn't know if you're.
No, it's a lot easier for them just.
We don't, yeah, we don't.
On the point, can I get a copy of the CDs of the plans I dropped off?
Yeah.
Thank you.
For reasonable price, Tony, those could be yours.
No, no, but I brought boxes and stuff. And Austin's never, never happy to see me, but I go, hey, Austin.
I can give them to you like on a drive, right?
That'd be great.
Yeah, because I'm like, I don't know how many to give them.
I think.
Fine.
Thank you. Run with me, Bob.
Go ahead, Tony.
Click the link, Bob.
Go.
Uh, the Stony Brook Roads and Streets, I had a, a good conversation, as I noted, uh, January sixth with the council for the association. We have a approach to resolve the dispute. Again, have individual board meeting discussions about that. And part of what Chelsea mentioned, and I'll mention, I have not yet called the attorneys back, is that. We need to have an affirmative resolution by the board at Stony Brook that they do want to undergo this process, uh, before we embark on, you know, bringing it to the board. we need to have an affirmative resolution by the Board of Stony Brook that they do want to undergo this process, uh, before we embark on, you know, bringing it to the Board, a possible resolution.
Could, could you give me a Cliff Notes version of where this came in?
I'd rather have a one-on-one, uh, we're having good discussions about a way to resolve it, uh, without a lot more.
All right, one-on-one, everything.
Yeah. Yeah, it's.
I love secret.
No, it's not secret, it's just that, anyway, it's, it's, I mean, the concept is something I had mentioned earlier and then we flushed it out a little bit, some conversations, uh, I'll figure out how to have it without litigation, but, they're free litigation, but, I'll call it off. Alternative dispute resolutions.
Right, no idea what you're saying.
I'll be out, but, but, the Pelican Reserve, uh, just replies, Chelsea's taking care of that, the access control is to protective injunctions.
Is the fund done, does that come off here?
They said, they said at their last meeting that all money's up in things, is that true?
I was sure.
And the check, that comes off, okay.
The check has not, it, it has cleared as far as it knows.
Yeah.
It's still in there, so.
The, uh, irrigation agreement, that's on hold, I'm, I'm not sure what is going on.
Right now, the community association is taking lead on, it's a, well, it's a, yeah, it's a, I think that.
Yeah, the memorandum regarding practices, the gatehouse ties in, protective injunctions, that'll come off also. Uh, Daniels Parkway upsizing as well as the Wells Agreement, uh, shooting for the February sixth board meeting day to have draft, have agreements between the attorney and myself, um, term sheet for the loans, we're just waiting for the loan documents, we've already received one set of loan documents and made some comments on those. Uh, utility rules, that's completed, that'll come off.
One last thing, I failed to mention, we have the movies on the field this Saturday, Inside Out Two, it starts at seven fifteen, a free pop.
Anything else, do they have any questions for Tony?
No.
No.
You sure, Lord misses?
The President's Council meeting at Stony Brook on the twenty-ninth of this month, we've got meter replacement project update, we've got the Palm Bank restoration update, we've got the assessment methodology update.
Are we going to have the President's meeting this time?
Yes, there are twenty people signed up.
Well, all right, all right. Any questions? At Stony Brook?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions?
No, we'll go out and we can advance.
Anybody have any questions on the, uh, agenda management? Okay, supervisor comments, Carol?
Yes, um, had a conversation with Laura and was talking to her about the monthly, or the weekly work reports that they do for Pelican Preserve and how you translate those numbers into the percentages. So when we come next year to budgeting, we'll know what our history was in percentages, and she said, um, I asked her if she could do it every quarter, and she suggested that I ask formally the Board to, for her to do, uh, uh, conversion or an assessment the second meeting in April, so that would be, uh, October, November, December, January, February, March, so it'd be six months. And April would also be the time when we're starting to talk about budgets, and so to give us an idea of the trends, is it up or down? Right now it's down, but I don't know by how much or whatever, and, uh, she made a very good point that she would only like to do it twice a year because she has to go back and it's not just the salary, which you gotta include all the benefits and everything else in it, and that's a lot more calculation. And so I told her, it's a six-month review and, um, I think Pelican would be more than happy to pay for it. And so I'd like to suggest that we have that six-month review, the second meeting in April.
We need to have you best get the approval of your people to do that.
PPAC, right? PPAC, so right now we are. Best comment I can say is, it's being done, the tracking is being done. I personally am not happy with the tracking method. I don't have an alternative to offer yet, but I'm working with the PPAC Subcommittee to try and solicit it, but so it's easier on that end and easier to understand on this.
Do we need to make any type of motion for what you just?
Uncomfortable with Carol saying, let's do it, maybe, and we are in one degree, we're willing.
I would think I would get a motion.
Anything else?
Let's put on the agenda management, then six.
Well, anything?
Uh, yeah, did we resolve, uh, the one oh nine, I haven't looked at the, the two properties that we had at the last meeting?
I don't know where we're at on one oh nine.
The Mahon, the Richard Moller and the Mahoney Run and then the other one, one.
Both, both of those property owners were provided the easement use agreement application, I believe Louis Smith is on one oh nine, right? And can you set?
One, I'm the Richard Moller.
Hutton, Hutton was the other one that you guys approved, that's gonna come back.
That's him, like, must remove.
Yeah, the Silver, the Silver Palms, you kept the, you kept the Royals, that coming back to be for ratification at the next meeting. Mo, Mo Erner, we, we sent him the application, have not heard back from him yet, I think, I think the last comment he said was the five hundred dollars was ridiculous. Uh, and then there was a Louis Smith that had also inquired about, I think, some bushes and shrubs, um, who did advise that he would not be filling out an application, so everybody who showed up at that last meeting with those concerns, we did email the application out, offered to sit down and provide assistance with filling it out, um, again, the only one that we have dealt with is Hutton and haven't heard back from anybody else interested in, in submitting.
But when I went out with Daniel, you know, which was one of the big, not the real bottom, but the other address.
That was Moiner.
Moiner, okay, oh, I didn't know you were there, it was already removed. So it's moved point.
No, no, that was on Lake One Twenty-seven, that was with the, uh, oh, that may go true.
He kept taking me to more places.
Which one was that, on one twenty-seven?
We had another gentleman who emailed about salvaging the mango free, that had already been burnt out, he didn't want to pay the five hundred bucks, he said he can get a lot of mangoes for five hundred bucks.
Is that the gen, is that, is that the gentleman that came into the meeting?
Yeah, uh, yes, yes, his wife, he came in because of his wife.
Yes.
And today you got the bids, or this week we got the bids for seventy-five, eighty-one, ninety-four and one oh nine?
Yes, they're coming to you on the first meeting in February.
Okay, so it'll be in the, they'll be in the book.
Yes.
Generally, were they lower?
Yes.
Okay.
From the last bids generally, from the bids, that would have been the low bids on the last go-around, uh, it's half a million between all four ponds, about half a million dollars lost.
The total is a half million on this.
So if we do it again, can we get another?
You run it into running, rainy season.
No.
Running out of time.
Their firm does.
Uh, Lobby, anything?
Lobby?
No, sorry, I just had to unmute, no, uh, the only thing is the email, um, I don't know if everybody received the email from Pelican regarding the pressure washing.
Regarding what?
The pressure washing. The guy, the guy who you used to hire to pressure wash all of the valley gutters and stuff over there sent an email complaining that it's not, we're, we're not doing a great job.
Okay, we just hired a company and that.
And that's because what he was doing was for aesthetics, to make it look good, and we've made.
It was sixty thousand dollars.
That, we, we don't do it for aesthetics, they have to do it themselves, if for aesthetics, but if it's a safety issue where you've got mud piling up or, um, some other issues, say, or rising or lowering or something, that, our machine will do.
If, if they should.
Chelsea would.
Pretty.
Yeah, a community wants to pressure work, they're, they can do that.
Yeah, block.
Okay, so Chelsea, if you, if, if we could, can, I forwarded you the email, can you just report it, what Carol just said to him, just let her know that the intention is not an aesthetic, but is a safety issue, and that's all they're handling right now?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Bobby?
No, I don't have anything else, guys.
No matter.
Uh, Saturday, I was, Saturday was going to Orlando and I noticed a guy in a white, uh, sedan pull up to the FPL gate, back entrance into, uh, uh, Pelican Reserve. Who, who has passes and keys and codes to get in that?
All my staff.
All my staff.
All my staff. But it could, it could have been somebody's staff, I just, I was driving by and I thought, that's kind of strange, somebody that's not a vehicle, not in a company vehicle or, uh, identified company vehicle.
What they did, when?
It's at Saturday morning, about eight-thirty, I was going to Orlando and saw it going in, I, I thought, I won't, if I turned around, I'd get into a competition, so I just let it go.
Where, where?
They came out of Gateway Boulevard and pulled in to go like they're going to go into company.
Parking there.
No, he was, he was going to that box.
If the box doesn't work, there's no power to it, but he can push those buttons all he wants and.
How, how do they get in there?
Bigger.
Oh, okay.
You think it's like a garage door opener.
Well, I've seen quite a bit of people parking there for whatever reasons.
That was, that was one issue, then the other issue was, is that, was that a hog that was up there on the road?
Yeah.
That was killed?
It's gone.
Okay, it's gone now.
Yeah.
Did you have a cookout barbecue?
Oh, God.
The hogs did. And the molters.
That's all I had, any other, any other business?
Move to a yard.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Nice job.
Thank you all.